I'd like to call to order of the council meeting. Today's date is July 13th. And if you can all join me in the pledge to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
The which stands one nation under God indivisible for liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, may I have a roll call, please? Let's see, Madam City Clerk?
She is muted right now. See if I can unmute her. Annette, are you able to unmute yourself? There we go.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can you hear us, Annette? Oh, she's muted again. Can you hear us, Annette? Let's just take the roll.
Yeah, perhaps she may be having some technical difficulties. I'd like to defer to our city attorney. Would it be possible, if you can call roll?
Yes, you can call roll.
I can call roll?
Yes.
Okay, you want me to do it, okay.
The chair can call roll for the, for the.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam City Clerk, I mean, City Attorney. All right, Annette, I'll give you another opportunity. Are you, can you unmute yourself or are you able to call roll? Okay, hearing, hearing nothing now. Call roll at this time. Councilmember De Giovanni?
Present.
Councilmember Dr. Rod Dasmagbual?
Present.
Councilmember Ray Buenaventura?
Present.
Vice Mayor Jesslyn Manalo?
Present.
And Mayor Glenn Sylvester, myself as president. Okay, we do have everyone here this evening. Annette, can you hear us now? Are you able to talk? Okay, looks like she's still having some issues. All right, the first item on the agenda is presentations. And at this time, we have an update on the city financial forecast with our consultant management partner. And now yield the floor over to them.
Shaw, good, good evening, everybody. Shawna, did you want to?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get straight to you, Mr. Toller.
There it is. Well, good evening, everybody. I would have much preferred to have been with you in the same room together, again, as usual. But unfortunately, these are very unusual times that we're all living in. So I wanted to share with you tonight kind of an update on, on some work that we've been doing with your staff in terms of updating the financial forecast. You remember about a year ago, I met with you and shared with you a new forecasting tool that we provided to the city. The city has been able to use that. And with Todd and Tim have been able to do some update of that tool. We've been working with them over the last several months, though, to really understand what the impacts are to this COVID-19 pandemic that we're all dealing with. So tonight, I thought what I would do is spend my time with you, sharing with you what the impacts are for Daly City as we see them, based on the experience that we have as a firm and working with several agencies throughout the county, throughout the state, and up and down the, the United States. So I'm gonna do a quick share screen here and share a slide deck that we have that will kind of be the, the eye candy, if you will, as we, as I go through this. So I'm assuming everybody can see the slide, okay? At least a thumbs up or something, a nod, there we go, good, great. So let me briefly go over kind of what we'll be discussing tonight. You know, the recessionary impacts that are going on right now from the pandemic that we are experiencing throughout, throughout the world, throughout the United States, and clearly within the state of California, is significant. And so we'll discuss what some of those impacts are. We'll bring you up to speed and update you. The last time that we actually met with you was in January as part of your strategic planning session. And at that meeting, staff actually shared with you an updated forecast at that time. And I'll help kind of orient you to what we were looking at then and now what we're looking at today, because there have been several changes that have been included within the, the fiscal, the financial forecast. We'll talk about, you know, what potential budget strategies might exist to address a fiscal gap that we see that's occurring in this, in this forecast and then provide some next steps that we believe you may want to take in resolving this gap. So firstly, let's just give you an update on Daly City's budget forecast. And I think of starting that, I just want to remind you and, and remind members of the public that may be watching tonight as well. You know, you have some, some really great positives as a community. You have a strong reserve balance. The city has done a great job in terms of being able to ensure that you have the reserves or the amount of money in the piggy bank that you have for your general fund, which is where you're providing most of your services that the community really expects, whether they be libraries, recreation, police, fire, et cetera. All those different types of services are provided in the general fund. And so you had, starting in fiscal '20, a reserve balance of over half of your annual operating expenditures. And just by virtue of, again, comparison, some cities are desperate to try to keep just barely two months or 17% of annual operating expenditures. So you've done a great job from that perspective. You, you have a diversified tax revenue stream. You've got about 40 plus 45% almost actually in, in property taxes. And then the rest are made up from the large sales tax base that you have with respect to your auto dealerships and your shopping centers, which are great when the economy is doing well and unfortunately are an elastic revenue source that expands and constricts as, as does the economy. And then your former redevelopment agency, the state has finally approved the final recognized obligation payment schedule and has approved the pay repayment of the loan to the city's general fund. And that's going to be very helpful for you of adding an additional one and a half million dollars that will be coming dedicated to the city to repay that loan obligation for the next several years. There are some challenges, though, and I'm sure that you've heard of a couple of, of the, all of these, actually. The first one is related to some changes that are occurring in, with the state and how they are viewing the payment of educational revenue augmentation fund or E-RAF funds. And that is having a potentially negative impact on the city's revenues that you get or excess monies that are being held by the county that come back to you each year. And so there may be some, some issues with that. We'll talk about those here in a moment. Your transportation engineering funds, when I met with you last year, almost at this time in August, to share the forecast, one of the items that was indicated there is that your transportation engineering funds appeared to have an ongoing structural gap that had to get resolved. And so there's an ongoing general fund subsidy that needs to be incorporated in your operating budgets to make sure that those are whole, because those revenue sources are, are being depleted with the, the, with the work that you're doing in terms of street improvements and, and your capital project, project management. This, this recession is having some pretty significant impact on revenues, and I'll talk about those here in a moment. And the city is going to have to address these impacts really by creating what we would call a fiscal sustainability plan that identifies measures that will help make sure that you maintain fiscal sustainability for the long term. And so let's talk about what some of these impacts are from this recession that we're currently in. And I think by way of reminder, it's important to look at a couple of different impacts. Firstly, is, you know, I mean, we, the, the work that has been done in California has been very helpful in terms of trying to keep people as healthy as possible. But with that, it has come at a cost. And nationwide, we're looking at significant unemployment, the likes of which has not been seen since, really, the Great Depression. We thought we went through a pretty rough time of the Great Recession in 2009, but we're seeing unemployment levels that haven't been seen since the Great Depression in the 1920s. And when you're talking about, you know, 20 million people that are still continued filing for unemployment claims, that's a clear sign that we are not in a V-shaped recovery here. This is going to be a prolonged impact. And the ripple effects from this will continue, we believe, to be felt over the next three years, actually. And in California, I mean, this graph shows you here what the weekly unemployment rate is in California for the latest period that we were able to get data from, which is the week of June 27th. And you see that the numbers are still staggering, pretty close to over 16% unemployment rate in California. And the impacts, again, from this, we believe we are in what economists might call an L-shaped recovery that will take about three to four years or so to fully recover from as we go through this. And this is a recession that's unlike the one that we went through in the Great Recession back in 2009. Some of you may have been on council at that time, and otherwise, you've, you've lived in the community and in the state for, for a while. You saw what some of the impacts were during the Great Recession. This one was different, because all of a sudden, the freight train that we were on, the economic freight train, came to a screeching halt. And it had some significant impacts in ways that the Great Recession didn't. When the Great Recession occurred, we saw that was more because of the real estate market and what was going on in, in that area that had a ripple effect. Sales tax revenues started to decline gradually over about a six to 18-month period, depending on the community and how elastic their revenues and their, their sales tax base was. And then started to, to decline and then started to come back up. Property taxes took about two or three years to really start seeing the impacts from those. This recession is going to be a little different. The property tax area, I mean, you're gonna be good for 2021. The assessed values from, for the most part, have not changed too much by the end of June, which is the time at which the, the county assessor's office locks down what assessed valuations are going to be. So you're likely going to be fine for '21. But what we'll see in terms of real estate values and the home sales over the next, you know, couple of years is going to be telling as a result of, or in, in regards to what's going to happen with the, with your property tax revenues, which, again, makes up pretty darn close to 45% of your, your general fund. And the, the biggest area that you might have some exposure with there would be in your, any of the commercial areas, commercial properties, because commercial property owners are much more inclined to create assessment appeals under Proposition 8 to reduce the assessed valuation when the market is down. And especially for any of the office buildings that you may have in town. We're seeing people working this way now, doing it remotely. Business travel is down, and, and people that are working in offices are now working remotely from home. And we're expecting that there's going to be some significant changes in office space needs. And so as you look at the office space inventory that you have in, in your community, it's going to be something that will, could trigger some Prop 8 reevaluations. Real estate property transfer tax, again, those revenues are based on home sales primarily, you know, and commercial properties, but residential turnover. And we'll have to see what, what those impacts are going to be. But clearly, sales tax and, and local transactions and used taxes, which you don't have right now. But sales tax revenues are seeing some pretty significant decline because of the, the closure. As you recall, Ceremony was virtually shut down for, for a couple of months. And while they have now started to kind of, you know, shift back a little bit, they started to provide, you know, more of the curbside type service. You know, we'll have to see what this new resurgence, resurgence of the virus may have on that. You know, I understand that San Mateo County didn't have any new closures this, today necessarily as a result of the, the governor's orders. But as we start seeing restaurants having to shut down, bars having to shut down, et cetera, we could see some continued impacts in, in terms of sales tax revenues. I know you'll, you have, you know, just a relatively smaller amount of transient occupancy tax, but business travel, I mean, the hotels pretty much were as close to shutdown as you possibly could be during the pandemic time. And we're starting to see a little bit more of that coming back, but it's not coming back anywhere near what we were looking at before March 16th, when, when the shelter and place orders happened. Business license tax will be an impact that we'll have to see what, what happens with next year, given the, the nature of your business license tax. There may be some softening of some revenues that we'll see there. And as you know, your recreation programs and your facility rentals pretty much, you know, were, were nonexistent from about the March timeframe through, you know, at least through June here. And there's the potential of some, you know, continued recreation program holdbacks in terms of being able to really provide services like we were doing before. And so what does this mean for Daly City? Well, as we look at things and as we have looked and been doing work with, with cities throughout the state that have helped inform not only what's going on within the state, within the region, and then knowing your revenues, sources and your expenditures as we do, you know, we, we see that, again, this is going to be a fairly long recovery. It will take over the next three to four years to get you back to anywhere near whatever normal is. The decline in sales tax, you know, of up to 17% is something that you're going to be seeing over the next couple of years. Your transient occupancy tax will be down at least by 20% in the year that just finished because of the virtual shutdown. We're expecting, again, a continued 20% decline in that revenue source. Franchise fees and your utility user taxes are fairly stable, because of the nature of this recession. It will not have a significant impact there. That said, we're starting to see more people, what is called cutting the cord, and starting to migrate away from, from cable and video services. And that could have an impact on, on franchise fees and, and in some regards, some of your utility tax. Your development fees, we're expecting those to remain fairly flat, maybe slowly returning over the next four years. But other than those specific projects that may serve signs of wanting to continue, if, if we're in a continued recession, the likelihood of development continuing will probably be significantly impacted. We're seeing decline in property values, and we expect that there, that might occur through 2022. And so we've incorporated in the, in the forecast a softening of your, your property tax revenues. And then your, your recreation fees. We've, we've got right now placeholder there of about a 25% decline. I know that your labor and recreation director is indicating that that could be even more significant than that. It could be even up to 50%. And so we can model that in, in the forecast. But long-term, over the next two years, we're assuming that there will be about a 25% decline in your recreation revenues for the year that just ended because of the shutdown and for this year, and, and then starting to recover then for the next year. And so what does that mean with respect to a revised budgetary forecast? There's, there's basically six big areas that are affecting your forecast. On the positive front, and I'll start on the, from left to the right on this slide. You are going to start seeing loan repayments from the former RDA. Those finally got approved. And so in 2019, 20, you started to see some of those revenues starting to come in, and you will see approximately one and a half million dollars, starting in fiscal '21 that will continue on through fiscal 2042. So it's gonna take a while to get that loan repayment back, but at least you're starting to see those. Those come in, have the ability to be used by your general fund, and so that's a positive. Your vehicle license fees were actually higher than what was originally anticipated. And so that's a positive. Vehicle license fees are pretty convoluted in terms of how they're shared from a statewide level. But in essence, they're really based on, on a population for the most part, which is why the census was going to be so important in ensuring that your community was registering, you know, your, your population. But it's also based on what the machination of vehicle license fees that are collected, registrations that are collected, and ultimately how those go back to cities and how they get funded through, through the state. And so there's a little bit more of an uptick there that was not originally anticipated. That's about 2.2 million, so that's gonna be helpful. But there are some other areas. I mentioned the, this excess E-RAF revenue. As you may recall, the county will take out some monies out of the property taxes collected that are apportioned to Daly City. They will take those out to be able to address the, the E-RAF requirements under state law. And because of the way that the state is now viewing how those taxes should be calculated, how those E-RAF payments should be calculated, it's having a negative impact on communities that have higher assessed valuations, like in San Mateo County, Daly City, and all the other cities in, in San Mateo County, almost by and large, are, are being impacted by this. We're seeing some in Alameda County, Contra Costa County, and some others. And this is going to have a negative impact on your, on, on your general fund revenues by as much as pretty darn close to $3 million if it were to continue. And I know that there's been some battling you've been doing collectively with, with other cities in the county to try to combat this. And hopefully, some of those, those fighting the good fight will, will be helpful. But we have a provision within the forecast, assuming that the state is able to make those changes that they're talking about that could ultimately impact your, your revenues. As I mentioned, your streets and city engineering fund, they're projected to require some ongoing subsidies. And so we've incorporated, incorporated those into the forecast, and those are about $3 million a year. Incorporating changes for employee compensation and benefits. We've, we've ensured that any of the changes that were made with the recently adopted memorandum of understanding with your labor groups are incorporated within the model. And then finally, COVID-19 is having a pretty significant impact in terms of what I just shared with you, in terms of what we're seeing for revenue loss. And, and how much is that? Let me unpack that within these next two slides. This slide here shows you what that forecast was that we shared with you back in January that staff had updated at the time as part of your strategic planning workshop. And there was a slight operating deficit that was expected, and it was gonna be about $2 million that would be ultimately, you know, manageable, given the, the reserve levels that you had. And your reserves would have stayed above your preferred target of 25% of annual operating expenditures, which is incorporated in the fund balance policy that will be on your consent agenda later tonight. And those, so those have been incorporated in these forecasts. Unfortunately, given some of those changes that we talked about, which were fairly significant, it's having a pretty dramatic impact on your annual imbalance between revenues and expenditures in the general fund. And so now, there's two things that are going on here. Number one is those ongoing changes, like I mentioned, of the, the E-RAF of ensuring that you're, you're keeping your streets and engineering funds funded properly. You know, some of those other changes are, are having an impact on this long term. And that's where your, your, your structural gap has now increased from $2 million up to about pretty darn close to $8 million if there were no actions taken to resolve them. Some of the spike that you're seeing here in 2021, 22, let me just bring up a little bit more of a highlighter so you can see it better. In this period here, starting in 1920, running through about '23 and '24, these significant drops here are really as a result of the $16 million of revenue loss that we're expecting, based on this recession being an L-shaped recovery and the declines that you're seeing in sales tax. And so a slight decline that we believe will be a delayed decline in property taxes, et cetera. And so what does that mean with respect to reserves? It's, you know, again, this is assuming that no corrective action is taken. Is that it, it, it changes the dynamic significantly. Your reserve levels, which were anticipated to stay pretty darn close to about $35 to $30, $40 million, again, with no corrective action, would be depleted very quickly based on, on what we just shared with you, such that you would drop below your 17%, which is two months of annual operating expenditures, which is the minimum target, and would ultimately could potentially go below zero in, in '23. It's a stark difference. However, your staff has taken some actions, as you are aware, to address this even before we, you know, finalize what the, the long-range forecast is showing. And there's four actions primarily that have been taken by the city. The first was that you approved a rollover fiscal '21 budget. But under the concept and what the orders have, have been from the city manager to departments is that we're only gonna be incurring recurring costs right now. We're not gonna be doing any new special projects or anything along those lines. So it's more of just let's manage within our existing recurring operating, operational environment to the extent that it hasn't been significantly negatively impacted by COVID-19, as you've seen in recreation and library and some other areas. Secondly, is that your city manager implemented a hiring freeze for non-mission critical positions. And that has had a, an impact of allowing you to be able to manage some of your costs with, with positions that are already vacant. So that is helpful, and we'll talk about that here in a second. The third area that staff has done is has deferred all non-urgent CIP projects until we can get a clearer picture of what the, the forecast is showing, because you wouldn't want to necessarily start incurring some significant costs that are non-enterprise related necessarily, right? You wouldn't want to start occurring those if you were concerned that there was the potential of, of starting to have cash flow issues. And so that had to be addressed in terms of this model. And then fourthly, is, is that there's been a temporary furlough of your seasonal recreation staff with the expectation that those staff would, would ultimately come back as we start turning back on recreation programs. But by virtue of, of furloughing those staff temporarily, it has helped to address the revenue decline that you're seeing. So what are the impacts from these administrative actions that have been taken thus far? It has reduced the gap from about $8 million to an ongoing of about $4 million. The primary benefit from that is, or the primary difference from that is freezing those positions and leaving them, assuming that they will remain vacant, until which time the fiscal gap is, is resolved. And so it's helped from that perspective, and it has pushed out the, the, the timing in terms of when you fall below your minimum reserve levels to '23 and really '24 would be when that would happen. And again, with no additional corrective actions taken, it would give you time before your reserves would be anywhere near approaching zero. And I know that this council is not interested in wanting to do anything like that. And so you do have time to address this. And what is the nature and the magnitude of what would need to be addressed? And that really comes into how you address these fiscal realities with what we would call a fiscal sustainability plan. And just from a big picture perspective, and I believe we talked about some of this briefly in your, in your strategic planning workshop. But we, we talked, as you remember, about, you know, that if, if there's a structural gap, there are basically four categories, as we have defined them, and how you address those. The first three categories are meant to maintain service levels to the fullest extent possible as to what they currently are. And those would be through either expenditure controls and cough shifts, which is kind of squeezing the nickel a little bit more effectively. And, you know, making sure that, you know, if, if contracts are up for renewals, that you're looking at those contracts and making sure that they're, you know, being done in an effective way. And also looking at perhaps, you know, shifting some of the general fund costs to other funding sources to the extent that they are legal and viable, in terms of that. Some agencies have, have done that, where they have been looking at their cost allocation plan of the time. Let's say that your city Let's say that your city manager, city attorney, finance department, et cetera, spend on enterprise-related activities. They might shift some costs over to those enterprise funds based on a study and looking at really what is the nature and amount of time and cost levels. So that's an example of of that area. The second area is service delivery alternatives. That's really looking at the concept of your shared service models, public-private partnerships, in-sourcing as well as outsourcing different um activities to provide them on a more cost-effective basis that still strive to maintain service levels to the your community to the fullest extent possible. The third area is is seeking, you know, some revenue enhancements. And those could be um anything from um, you know, taking a fresh look at your fees and charges that you're charging and ensuring that you're um trying to shrink the gap between what those costs are and what the revenues are that you're collecting, trying to increase the cost recovery levels, um but could also mean expanding the base of your revenues, whether it's in your fees and charges or even your tax revenues. That's done by economic development and some other areas, or even increasing the um the the price of each each element, whether it's fees and charges, um or some agencies look at at doing, you know, some some um tax enhancements to provide some recovery for them. So those are the three areas that will seek to maintain service levels to the fullest extent possible. And if the combination of those three areas are not sufficient to address um the sustainability needs, then um you would need to look at service level reductions. And those um, you know, are are dependent upon what is the um amount of the the gap that needs to be solved. And so um these the this list here that's in front of you are some different short-term versus ongoing strategies that the city might um wish to consider. These have not been vetted by us, um, you know, in individually to determine any type of level of impact. That would be work that you would want to do as part of your fiscal sustainability plan. But these are tried and true practices that are done um by cities throughout the state, throughout the region, within San Mateo County. Other agencies have done this, and these um are are um areas that in some cases you have already done or you did back in two thousand nine, ten to address some of the recessionary impacts. And on the short-term area, it ranges anywhere from, and I'm not going to go through individual detail with each of these items, but just an overview of, you know, eh eh looking at perhaps some funds that may have been set aside um by the council in the past. One example is some monies that you have set aside in a fund to help with pension um um costs. Um, as they go forward, there's some money that has been set aside there. You could bring that in to help um take care of um some of the general fund gap as a one-time source. So that's an example of of strategy there. You've already deferred capital projects. Um, some agencies will do things like deferring cost of living adjustments and working with bargaining units to take care of that. Suspending travel and training right now is fairly straightforward to do because of the shelter in place that, you know, well, we're not shelter in place as much anymore, but with a lot of the travel restrictions that are out there, um a little easier to do. Suspending the use of consulting services is is another clear viable option. Um, and then the closure of recreation programs. But on the ongoing area, you 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 have a a gap that um of about four million dollars that will need to be addressed. And those could range from, you know, such things as um, you know, um, working with bargaining groups, looking at workforce reductions, uh if if service level reductions are going to be required. You know, trying to find opportunities to be able to provide services more cost-effectively, whether they be shared service, private partnership, contracting those services, whether in-sourcing those. That means contracting services to provide some with some excess capacity that some of your staff may have to provide those services at a cost or seeking other agencies to to work with in that area. And then also, you know, in the area of either increasing cost recovery of services or looking at potentially new revenue sources for local recovery and relief, um might be um something that could be helpful. And when we look at the model and understanding there's that four million dollar gap, the the city is going to need to look at four million dollars of strategies to be able to address um the um the gap in the general fund. And that could be a combination of expenditure reductions or revenue enhancements along the lines that I've included on this slide and I mentioned in the in the previous slide. So just a couple of of samples of 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 what that might look like is that if the city looked at having to reduce expenditures, let's say by by four million, or just seek, you know, budget strategies that the total four million dollars. That would make sure that you were able to stay um at pretty much at the um the two months of annual operating expenditures that you could see in this red line here. You would fall below your preferred reserve target of three months or twenty five percent, but it would um take you and keep you at or about the um that two-month level. And this scenario here, um which is again just another example by running your forecast model, is that if you utilize those pension reserves that you have that are about four million dollars or so that you have um set aside, you could infuse those into your general fund, starting in this uh this fiscal year here in twenty one. Um, and that would allow you to glide slope this down um by implementing three and a half million dollars of budget strategies by fiscal twenty three. So in both cases, um you you need not take action this year. You have reserves to be able to weather the storm. You have time to see how dramatic the impacts of this COVID nineteen-induced pandemic recession will be on on the city and on your finances to make some some changes. But it will be important for you to really start addressing those and identifying what, you know, what what are the um different options that you want to address with that. And I I want to just give you some context as well. We're doing work with right now actively with ten agencies in California and a couple more in some other states that are, you know, um in in the uh in in the Pacific Northwest. Your your gap, as I mentioned on this previous slide, let me just bring that up. It's about four percent of your general fund operating expenditures. There are cities within your county, there are cities within the Bay Area that are looking at nearly fifteen to twenty percent of um of either expenditure reductions or um revenue enhancements that they're going to need in the next year, in in the year that we're now currently in at twenty one, to address their issues and remain solvent. And so um you are in a better position than a lot of other cities are. And that said, um, there is still a um a challenge before you to be able to address those and maintain um, you know, the appropriate level of reserves that are going to be required. The other thing I want to mention in here is that um thankfully, the state came around and said, you know what? All that five hundred billion dollars that we got or whatever much money that we got from the CARES Act, we're going to start sharing those with local communities. You probably heard about this, League California Cities was really pushing cities. Your um your finance staff and your city manager went ahead and um, you know, um, applied for those monies. I think those monies are going to be about neighborhood of about three, one point three five million um is what you will see. So those have been incorporated in the um in this forecast. We wanted to make sure that those were incorporated in there um um in in terms of uh of of ongoing. So so that's that's in there, and that's very helpful. So let me just sum up my 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 presentation here and and what we're seeing. There is a um a fiscal gap that will need to be addressed um um for the city. The sixteen million dollars that we're um right now forecasting in total, you know, revenue impairment to the city's general fund is just, you know, it's exacerbating your issues. And like I said, fortunately, you had built up reserves to be able to weather the storm that we're in right now. But there will be the need to um identify budget strategies of about four million dollars to be able to maintain those reserve levels at at least the the um the minimum target of two months of annual operating expenditures. The 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 longer it takes to act on these things, the potential that um the 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 deeper the impacts will be, and especially if they're not able to come from revenue sources, then the deeper the cuts will need to be. But, you know, you um you do have time um and you do have the ability um to to be able to work through um identifying these. And so as as we look at what next steps might be for you, we would um recommend that you, you know, first, and you'd have to do this tonight, but I think that it's going to be important for you to um, you know, in in the very near term is identify what are the budget strategy categories that you want to pursue? Do you want to pursue, you know, areas in the expenditure control areas and service delivery changes? Are there revenue sources that you want to look at for um to help with your your local recovery efforts? Or even, you know, areas of of service level reductions um that may be um maybe needed? And then finally, is is um, you know, we would encourage you to prepare prepare what we would call a fiscal response plan or fiscal sustainability plan. And you might want to cut, you know, um, address a couple of some a different or a few different scenarios. Some that might be revenue-centric versus expenditure eccentric and and everything kind of in between so that you really have a a good understanding of what the different strategies are, how they might come together. And also really to to do some of that scenario planning, because um, you know, the best laid intentions sometimes are not able to come to fruition. And if they don't, then at least you have your backup plan to be able to to address those. And ultimately, those would be those strategies, you know, to 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 create the fiscal sustainability that you need and develop your implementation action plan. So so with that, um, that completes my um my presentation. Um, my contact information has been provided to you. And I'm going to just stop here so that we we can have a conversation. And and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those.
I'm going to chime in just really quickly before I kick it over to um our elected officials. I'm sure they have questions or comments, but um I wanted to save some of my comments until after Mr. Toller had the opportunity to present. And there are just a couple of things I want to say. As a city manager, um, this is not a message really that is a fun to deliver, but most city managers right now in the county, state, in the nation are delivering these kinds of messages. We spent so much ti- time trying to message this to not scare the community, to not scare our workforce, to not scare the council, that we've gotten ahead of this as much as we can. In fact, when the pandemic started, probably by April, we started tracking things. How is this going to impact Daily City, especially since in just January of this year, things were looking really, really good? Definitely disheartening, but um as Mr. Toller said in the beginning, we were not as dire as other cities. The other thing that I want to point out, because I know that there's a probably some fear going around once you see these um these numbers, uh, is that, you know, I've been with Daily City for over fifteen years. I was the H R director for thirteen years before I was the city manager. Uh, I've been through a recession with the city before. And the difference, I think, now is that we are not in a space where we're try where we're going to take very dire measures right now. We're going to be very measured about how this impacts us. Uh, we are not, you know, you see all these budget strategies that are on these PowerPoints that could be very scary to the community and to our labor groups. It's the reality that we we went back and forth with each other about what we wanted to present. Did we want to create, you know, fear or reality? And we try to get right in the middle of it. You know, we're we're a little bit nervous about the future. We have a plan, um, but we don't want to say that the sky is falling. So I just really want to assure people that I'm not a fair weather city manager. I've been through this storm before with Daily City. I know that the council's not fair weather leaders. I know our labor groups, our staff from the senior leadership down the ranks have have been devoted to Daily City. We we will get through this. This is just a message that is kind of hard to hear right now, but it's not a message that is um that is different than what other cities are going through. And that's just really important for me to say, uh, given some of the uncertainty that's out there right now. And I really value everybody that's present during this time, whether you're working from home or you're, you know, public safety and water wastewater that are have been working twenty-four seven. We value everybody, and this is not about anything but trying to figure out the best plan so that the community and our workforce, uh, we can continue to thrive as best we can in this environment. So I just appreciate the opportunity to say that.
All right. Thank you, um, Madam City Manager, and thank you, Mr. Toller. And what I'd like to do at this time is open it up for uh questions and comments from my colleagues. I do have a few questions, so I'll defer. Matter of fact, I I will start first. Uh, Mr. Tolle, you made mention about the structural gap in the C I P. Now, I thought uh we were doing okay because we set aside funds for C I P. And uh I hopefully I'm not confusing this with enterprise funds. And as my understanding, we cannot move monies over from enterprise funds. It stays there. So enterprise funds and C I P is two separate things?
That is correct. Yes, your your enterprise funds um have been funded by, you know, um rates that you're you're charging for water and wastewater. And so those are separate from this. This is your your citywide C I P fund, um, it's Fund Thirty-One, if you remember that from budget perspective. But um tha- that fund includes some folks from your Public Works Department or Engineering Group that have um, you know, historically been allocated there. Um, and then there are either revenue sources that come from either grants or other funding sources that that are hap- helping to pay for those C I P funds. So C I P projects, um, but to the extent that those C I P projects um are not funded by those other sources, then there is something that's coming in from the from the general fund to help that. In the past, your engineering staff has been allocated completely to, you know, not completely, but several of your staff have been allocated to those funds. But the um the the projects and the revenue sources have not been sufficient to deal with that. The general fund is going to have to to basically pick up those costs, and that is assuming about about just over one million dollars a year.
All right. And this is completely different also from deferred maintenance, which I really didn't hear much about. You know, changing the rules on some of our properties and et cetera. Where does those funds come from?
Yeah, the the um, the forecast incorporates um some funding for um dealing with some of those deferred maintenance costs that you have. There were some set-asides that were that were still in there, and that's in the baseline forecast. And so when you're looking at this renewed four million dollar gap, that includes that there is some money that's being set aside to help with some of those deferred maintenance and also some of your um equipment replacement projects. But it's not the full extent, like, let's say, replacing the library or something like that. It doesn't include um that level of significance of funding.
All right. Thank you. A couple more questions. Uh, you you know, we've been through this before, and it always seems like uh it's doom and gloom. And uh I appreciate uh uh yours and the city manager's uh thoughts on not really wanting to scare us or the or the uh the council or the community. So it's very much appreciated. I read an article today from the uh Controller of San Mateo, and he states that there was a six point seven percent increase in uh uh on the property rolls. You think that may help?
Um, that that clearly would help. Yeah, we have um, we were looking at that. I think that was a um the the county-wide perspective. We have been using um, San Mateo County is so awesome when it comes to this. They have an assessment role tracker that you can track, you know, each day, real time, what the assessment value is and what's happening in your community. And so I've been, you know, working with staff on 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 that and looking at that. And it looks like from the role tracker, it looks like for Daily City, it's going to be anywhere from a three and a half to four and a half percent growth um in in assessed value. But I'll be honest, I haven't looked at it since he came out with that um the press release today. So we can look at that and and revise that. But long range, the forecast assumes about a four percent growth in in property taxes from a baseline perspective.
Okay, great. Thank you. Got it. And I just wanted to make a comment, one last comment on uh T O T. Now, uh, did we take into uh uh consideration that we are moving forward with uh even though the pandemic and now construction has reopened, that we are moving forward with the uh uh construction of hotels in our city?
Right. So um the way that the forecast currently approaches that is that unless um there is shovel on the ground and it's expected to be completed within the next two or three years, it's not incorporated in the forecast, so.
Okay. All right. Okay.
So a- and those are great examples, Mr. Mayor, of of um revenue opportunities that you've already been been working on as a community. And so um and especially to the extent that there's that that hotel that's being contemplated of of coming on board, that's not going to help you from a property tax perspective, from T O T perspective. That will soften the blow. That's not going to help you from a property tax perspective, from T O T perspective. That will soften the blow in terms of budget strategies that that may be required. But until which time those projects are shovel in the ground and and, you know, looking like they're starting to going to come up in the next couple of years. They have not been incorporated right now in the model.
All right, so we're being very conservative. Thank you.
Conservative, yes.
All right, that's all I have at this time. I'll turn it over to my colleagues. Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you, Mr. Toller. Great presentation. Appreciate your help. And city manager and the staff, fantastic. Like you said, we we are not as bad as some, but we have time, but we don't want, the longer we wait, the worse it is. Would you mind? Going back to that E R A F that I know that is under consideration by our estate. And so that people know that our estate with is is going to change things and about decision timeline for us on. The possibility that this could really change for us for not getting as much.
Yeah, I can I can touch a little bit more of the the big picture that I don't know if Shauna or or maybe Todd or one of your staff want to. Add a little bit more color commentary to it, but you know, the the. I thought we passed Prop One A that was going to stop the state from playing games, right? Unfortunately, they are incented now to look at revisit what the rules are by which. The Education Relief Augmentation Fund is is. Is setting aside revenues locally for to fund education. And the, you know, the 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 issue there is that they're playing with those rules in such a way that will. Allow the state to take more of those those funds. From communities that have, you know, pretty high assessment values, right? And so what that means for Daily City is about a. Every year you were receiving, I think it was about four and a half, five million dollars or so of access refund because the Controller's Office was being conservative. And taking more money aside to make sure that the state was fully, you know, funded with respect to its E R A F requirements, right? And then and then the, after they did the calculation at the end of the year, again, because they were conservative. They would then give that that money back to each agency, and your agency was about five million dollars. Well, it's looking like based on their new rules, the expectation is that you could be down to about. Two plus million dollars. So it's about a two, two point eight million dollar swing, and that's that's what one of the problems are with that, that you're repending. And I don't know if Shauna or Todd want to add anymore to that response?
The only thing I wanted to add was that the decision was made recently that we would not have have to retroactively. Pay the E R A F money back, which is great. What we'd like is to continue to get the E R A F money that we have been historically. Because we really depended on that, but at least the good news is that we had no retroactivity payment.
Thank you. And then also, I remember that we had one time, whenever economic opportunities, like even. Possible sales of our our city property that we have available at one time assessing it or making decisions. Would that be part of our recovery? Would that help? Or would that be included to to review that again? Or or is this too early to even ask that, Mr. Toller?
Couple of ways that I would, are these, these are city properties, not former redevelopment properties, right? Yeah. So if with respect to to city properties, one of the things that we caution as a firm is that. You you don't want to sell long-term assets for operations, right? If they provide you an opportunity to be able to seed some money for something that would have long-term, you know, revenue growth or expenditure reduction potential. Then that's that's great, but. You know, so i- i- it could be a one-time strategy, but honestly, unless you were under such fiscal duress that. Unless bankruptcy was in the horizon, which it's not for you.
That's what I mean. I want to emphasize to people that it's not. We're in this position and appreciate that that, like you guys had found a balance, but we are not in dire, like other. Cities, thankfully, and. The last one basically is, so are we going to have to like set up a timeline so that we can start making decisions? We're going to meet and. With you and try to figure out what we can do, what would be the best pros and cons of each thing that you presented. And and look at what we can do to whether this COVID crisis, which we don't even know when it's going to end at this point. So the consequences of where you already did already has really provided a big, a good picture for us. And some of the possibilities that we can do. And the, oh, real, just real quick, that one, the timeline and the consideration of the pensions. Should we consider that? Because that's a part of it. So I don't know, you're going to present us the pros and cons, I'm sure at some point of certain.
Yeah, we can provide some support to you in in identifying what, you know, some of the the viability of different strategies. And for example, that that pension fund, you know, using some of that right now. And, you know, that's one of the things that I didn't mention in 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 this conversation because the jury is still out on this, but. With respect to the pension costs, as you know. The, you know, Calpers closed this books on June thirtieth. Were waiting to hear what their investment returns were. In March, it was a negative four percent, and that had the potential of increasing your pension cost. By twenty percent, which was significant, but, you know, the market did its roller coaster ride towards the end of the year. Got back up to pretty darn close to zero, may have actually shown a gain in this year. Doesn't look like it was going to hit the seven percent that they were targeting, actually seven. Quarter percent, seven and eight percent. They were targeting. So so there there may be some impact, and we have some conservatism built into the. The model right now, assuming that, you know, your pension costs may have an increase, but we'll need to see what that looks like. And so I just wanted to mention that because the pension fund that you've set aside is supposed to help with those different times. If there's a time to use it, it's now. And so that's something that you could do by basically just, you know, council action at some point. But resolution is approving a transfer from that fund into the general fund when the timing is right.
Appreciate the guidance on our guiding our ship, because like you said, we're different from other cities, and you already know that. Very versed, which I like that, and what is different in our city versus other ones, and that's really very helpful. And so that the people at home and and our community can know that we are in taking actions. And with that, since you've come on board and been such a big help at our planning part with the council and with our city manager, it really has helped. Even from that point, even though the COVID showed up, which was unexpected, you're still there for us and you're helping us guide us through. And we are, I totally appreciate it and look forward to the timeline and so we can take care of our city and the people in it. And our employees and the community as well with services. So thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember DiGio Boni. All right, is there any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Your Vice Mayor Manalo.
Thank you so much. First and foremost, I want to say thank you, Shauna, for your leadership and the team here with the Finance Department. On Mr. Toller for your presentation. I know this was something along the horizon and really seeing. Where the landscape of our finances are, most especially during this really unprecedented times. And so seeing what the forecast is is very important and how you provided it. Around what strategies we may be able to provide in the in the future. For me is if we, in your financial experience, if we were to look at, and I know no one has a crystal ball. Six months from now and just an assessment of things, could there potentially be a shift in the strategy that you've provided today?
Could there be a shift in the strategies?
Yes, I I mean, potentially, if there was any, I mean, movement around changes or i- is this basically, you know what? This is the strategy we would look I look towards. This is just one of my first questions.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. Sure. So, you know, we haven't locked down on anyone specific strategy. What the what the concept is, is that based on what the forecast is telling us now. The the crystal ball, it, you know, it's about a four million dollar gap that will need to be addressed. Whatever selection of strategies you decide to use is going to have to come over the next, you know. Two weeks to to two years to to address that. You know, and I think that, you know, to the extent, you know, you, this is one of those things where one of the things that are within our control. And one of the things that that we're going to need some help, either from the community or from other parties, you know, with 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 dealing with. And so so there's no set of strategies necessarily that we're saying that you need to to, you know, adopt right now. But I think it is going to be important to look in inside those four buckets of, you know, which of those individual strategies may make the most sense for you. I know that you 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 don't really want to try to, you know, reduce service levels in your community, you know, the community is expecting them. Maybe if there's some low hanging fruit, maybe there is, but but, you know, honestly, there's there's going to have to be some hard work to to be done. So I don't know if that's helpful.
Helpful, I mean, I know we would just need to do a reassessment and 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 really look at what comes down the pipeline. And in order for us to really, you know, have more data and information. You know, I think it's important that you mentioned that there is the CARES Act that was already involved within within the model that you provided. Because that was some of the questions I I I had was, you know, how about the dollars that are coming down the pipeline? Are are they in these models, you know? I'm sure, you know, the extensive work that you all provided is important that it's actually in the forecast. The question I have is I know that we are paid paying down some of our debt. In some of our liability for pensions. And at the the former forecast, it mentioned that we were going to be able to pay it off at a certain timeframe. And is is that included in the model? And if so, when do we finally pay it off? Or I I know it was close closer than, or I'm thinking, I was just looking. Ahead, but I know at one point we're going to pay it off.
Yeah, those pension obligation bonds are due, and I'm trying to find that. Todd, do you remember off the top of your head what that is? I thought it was twenty twenty-five.
I know, twenty twenty-four. Yeah, we will, the pension obligation bonds will be paid off, but the unfunded liability. The unfunded liability payments do increase for both the safety plan as well as miscellaneous plan through twenty thirty-one. Based on the most recent actuarial information that we have.
Right, but those pension obligation bonds will will, you know, be fully paid by by the end of twenty-four, so that's very helpful for the city. That's why actually in the in the graphs that you saw, it it was going down to like eleven or twelve million and then would come back up, right? And that was that was part of the reason for that.
Okay, great. And then the other question along the same lines as the mayor mentioned around hotel development. Does your forecast include developments that are down the pipeline around mixed-use developments and housing opportunities? That are around the horizon?
Yeah, um, in a word, no. We know that those are out there and those are are have have some great potential, but none of those development projects that are currently. In the so-called pipeline have been incorporated into this model, but one of the nice things about the model is that you can do some what-if scenario analysis is that. You know, well, if this does happen, what does that look like and what impact does that have for us? But, you know, again, unless shovels and ground, all entitlements are there, shovels and ground. Recommend that it not be banked on yet.
Okay, thank you. And then also, I know you talked about E R A F funding and and from the conversation earlier. It was about, it sounds like it would be cut in half around the potential amount that we would receive. In in that regard, I did notice, and this is something maybe down the pipeline, that the county of San Mateo. You utilizes half of their E R A F money for their general fund and also half for. Expenditures that are line item. So, I mean, they have this policy, and I know in the past it's been talked about. That, you know, we can't utilize it for, it has to go into the general fund. I'd like to see if there's any way for us to look at. What the county does, and I know things are changing with E R A F, but I'd like to see how that could actually help with some of. You know, some of the items that we have that are long-term and not necessarily. Just one-time funding for our long-term expenditures.
Yeah, i- i- in that regard, the the E R A F refund that you get back because it's taken out of your property taxes, it typically is shown in general fund. Council has discretion in terms of if they wanted to earmark, you know, that or any other revenue source, you know, that's not extremely restricted. For a certain purpose. So that is something that the council would have the availability to 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 look at, but you're right. I mean, it's going to be falling. I'm just looking at that. From about five million dollars down to just north of up two million dollars per year that you're receiving.
Okay, well, I I think that's the end of my questions. I really appreciate it. I'm hoping that this ends sooner than later for so many reasons for our community, just health-wise and just. Around economic recovery and appreciate this, you know, I I'm I'm hopeful, I I'm thankful as well. For the realistic model and also not, you know, trying to instill any fear. I think that, you know, we will continually want to update and see maybe if there's any shifts or changes. Down the down the line, but this is so important. Thank you, Shauna, for bringing this to the table. I know this was something that we're eager to see as we hit mid-year, and so thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Are there any other questions?
Mayor, I just, I don't have any questions, just comments. I just want to say thank you to Shauna. And Mr. Toller, in terms of creating this presentation for us. I know when money comes. Like money issue related, people get really scared and fearful about what will happen. And, you know, that's kind of the general feeling that the public has is what's going to happen? And nobody is for sure what's going to happen, but. With the more mo- the information that, more information that we have provided for us. Anxiety that we have in terms of what we can do. Thank you, Shauna, for, you know, just reassuring about taking measured steps to. The forecast because, you know. Really hopeless. We get really scared and sometimes we'll do stuff that's reactionary, but I think we did, we were kind of like sort of ahead of the curve. It could be worse, and I'm hopeful that we're able to weather the storm and do the necessary adjustments ahead of time.
Thank you, Dr. Rock. Okay, what I'm hearing from the. Councilmember Brenda Ventura, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to dovetail on Vice Mayor Manalo's concern about forecast. So i- i- it's clear we are in this situation because of COVID nineteen. And because we were doing fine, we were actually doing great before this pandemic hit. So I'm wondering, Mr. Toller, in your forecasts, what kind of assumptions did you make? And what I'm speaking of is, let's say that there is a vaccine that. Is developed, I don't know, at the end of the year, God willing. Will will that, do you think, change the forecast? Or is what you have identified based on already the damage that has been done? Already because of the COVID situation? So is what your predictions are. Based on purely what damage has been done and what we need to do to fix the damage? And then will our situation change? Can we undo the damage, I guess what I'm saying, if a vaccine comes about and changes the whole? World? So that's my question.
We unmute, sorry about that. Yeah, let me, let me go back to sharing this one slide because I think it's helpful to understand that. I think that with respect to. The vaccine and I I pray that you're right. I pray that you're right, that we get this vaccine quickly, so we can get back to some level of normalcy. It will help make these bars less deep. It will help with restoring the revenues loss that we're experiencing that we expect to see through twenty twenty-four, and that will be very helpful. This right here, this gap of four million dollars is is ongoing, and really you you see none of the impacts from COVID nineteen out here. This is really more, other than maybe some interest earnings that got lost because of the, you know, depletion of reserves. This right here is really happening as a result of the E R A F refunding that's been going on, the 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 subsidies. That would be required to make sure your streets and. The, um, the, the, the subsidies that would be required to make sure your streets and, um, and your engineering funds are, are made whole. So it, it, it's those issues as well as the potentially, you know, um, increased pension costs that may be occurring based on the most recent actuarial report. So anyway, so I think that, that, um, the vaccine will be helpful in keeping some of these bars a little bit shallower and therefore buying you more time out here. Cause your reserve levels would not be depleted as much, um, but ultimately you're going to have to target something that will address this so long, long-term gap.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, council member, Brenda Ventura. What I would like to do based upon what I've heard from everyone. You know, normally we go through this process maybe once, well, at least once. And, uh, thanks to you Shawna for, um, bringing this to light. It seems like you want to provide more transparency and understanding for us as council members. And to do this twice a year, um, under your leadership, uh, that's great. What I would like to, uh, uh, consider is that we engage as a council at a minimum of every quarter, every three months, we get together. And based upon the current situation as it stands. And for instance, like the vice mayor had mentioned, it might be a possibility to change strategies in addressing, uh, some of these short, shortfalls. I mean, uh, I have a recommendation and, uh, one of that is, one of them is we haven't done this in, I believe, many years. And that is going through our fee schedule to see, uh, if, uh, cost recovery at a minimum needs to be changed. Uh, where we're only charging very, very minor fees and other cities are charging much more, I think we are behind. So I think that's another mechanism to provide additional revenue for our city. And so I think meeting as a council and a, uh, study session or meeting at least every three months. Number one, we can get, uh, based upon what is happening at the present time, where we've been and how we move forward by getting ideas from the council. As Mr. Toler had made mention, I had no idea that the council can decide where to move that, those ERAF funds. So, uh, I, I think that's what we need to find out and we can only do that by all meeting together and, uh, obtaining full and complete transparency. And I thank you, um, Smalpe for allowing, uh, us to do so and bringing this to light.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, absolutely. Every three months would be ideal for staff as well. So there are no surprises, so there's open dialogue. And you read our mind on the fee schedule because that is something we will be bringing forward to council. Uh, hopefully this year, because you're right, we are definitely behind in that. So I think we're all on the same page.
Thank you, Ms. Malpe, and we would not have been on the same page if it wasn't for your leadership and bringing this to our attention. Thank you so much. Okay, are there any further questions? All right, I'd like to move forward. Uh, again, thank you, Mr. Toler, and we will be, uh, seeing more of you. And, and, uh, make sure you keep plugging in those correct numbers for us, okay?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, uh, entertain a motion for their approval of minutes for June twenty-second, two thousand nineteen.
Motion to approve minutes.
First and the second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Okay, how about this? Are there any no's? Any abstentions? Okay, the minutes have passed. Uh, entertain a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve minutes, uh, or actually, uh, agenda for this evening.
All right, you got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member, Dejavani. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, um, the next item is the consent agenda. And I received a, uh, comment, uh, on one item, item number three. So I'd like to pull that item off of the, uh, consent agenda approval. Other than that, uh, first I'll defer to, uh, Stephen. Do we have any other public comments on, uh, any of the other agenda items, one, two, four, five, six, or seven?
Let me check, um, real quick here.
Okay, while you're checking, uh, to my council member colleagues, is there any item besides item number three you would like to pull while Stephen's checking?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like to pull just i- item number four, please.
Number four, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Stephen.
Um, let me go through one. No, none of the general comments, uh, refer to specific agenda items.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'll entertain a motion to
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item number five. Thank you very much.
Number five, okay. Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the exception of items number three, four, and five.
Anyone? Prove the consent agenda, uh, minus items three, four, and five.
Okay, we have a first. Is there a second? Okay, I did hear, uh, second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any, any no's? Any abstentions? Okay, the consent agenda has been approved and we'll start off with, uh, item number three. Uh, and I'll turn that over to, uh, uh, staff. I believe it's, um, Ms. Sakal. Nellie.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. The resolution before you this evening is to adopt the health and welfare benefits for the City Council. The health and welfare benefit structure is consistent with benefits that all other bargaining groups receive during labor negotiations. And I will defer to the City Attorney on the background on the benefits for City Council.
Thank you. Um, basically, the health and welfare benefits for the City Council, uh, the benefits for the council, uh, can be approved by resolution. My understanding is the benefits that are before the council this evening. The council has not received a health and welfare benefit since two, since twenty-ten. The proposal that is before the council for their benefits, uh, reflects, uh, benefits from bargaining groups, up to the maximum amount that is allowable for the bargaining groups. So it is consistent with, um, with those benefits and increases.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Attorney. Are there any other comments from any of the council members before we open it up to the, uh, public comments? Hearing none. I would like to now open it up to a public hearing. It's my understanding that we did receive one comment and I'll defer to, uh, Stephen to read the, uh, comment.
Mayor, are you referring to the email that the city clerk forwarded?
Uh, no, I thought you forwarded.
I, I did as well, yeah.
Oh, you did as well. Okay, well, our normal protocol is, uh, comments should have been provided upon the link that's been provided to the community.
Yes, and, um, virtual meeting page, there are no comments on this agenda item number three. We have other comments, um, but there's none specific to this one on our virtual meeting page.
Uh, I see. Okay, so as we proceed, uh, you were going to review comments based upon those that have been received specifically through the virtual meeting page that has been put out to the community.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments that we receive in advance to the city clerk are just forwarded to council for review, um, for, you know, you can read them in advance.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council member, um, Dejavani, did you?
Yeah, thank you. Just for clarification, so people that send in, some people are thinking that, um, because I received a text earlier today, they, they are thinking the perception is because of these Zoom meetings, that if they send in a comment, that it will be read at the, at the, at the comment of the, of the item. Is that not correct? I mean, is that, can you clarify that?
Yeah, I'll clarify. So we, um, during the pandemic, we contracted with a company called Open Gov. And we can create this virtual meeting page and it's a one-stop shop with our meeting live stream. It's the, you know, anyone who visits that page can see this Zoom meeting live. Uh, they can review the agenda and they can submit public comment online on this meeting page. And that's our substitute really for in-person public comment here at City Hall because, um, our meetings are now closed to the public. So we have this substitute in the interim for online virtual commenting. Long-term, for, you know, way years back, um, people can submit comment in advance of meetings to the city clerk. And we receive written letters, um, we receive emails that way. And what the city clerk does is that she sticks to a procedure where she forwards all that correspondence to council for review in advance of the meeting. So we're sticking to that procedure still. But if people want to have their comment read out loud, they really should use our virtual meeting page. And that's the, um, website we advertise on our, all of our agendas. And it's that one-stop shop that they can visit. But all comments received by email or by mail to the city clerk in advance are still shared with our city council. Sometimes, you know, depending on the subject, we can get a really heavy volume of correspondence. So we generally don't read that into the record, even though it, it remains part of the record.
Okay, so what if they don't have access to that? Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. Apologize. What if they don't have access to the online?
Well, um,
I'm reading this.
You know, we, I guess we could take them on a case-by-case basis. We haven't had any requests by email for, um, reading out loud for this meeting. So it's something we could look at in the future. I don't have any examples for tonight of that.
Okay, cause this one, but I just wanted to point out if, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. Okay, go ahead, because this is public comment on this item, but I have something to say about the item.
All right, um, uh, thank you, uh, thank you, Stephen, uh, for the clarification. All right, I'll, uh, open it up to, uh, my council members for comments.
Mayor, we did just receive a comment on our virtual meeting site right now, um, at eight twenty-two relating to item number three, if you'd like me to read it out loud.
Okay, I guess, um, I, I just said okay and didn't close the public comment period at this time, so it does qualify. All right, please go ahead. Please proceed.
It is from Joshua Reese. Um, and it says, "Honorable City Council, I am questioning why the daily city council is voting to increase the amount of money each council member receives for opting out of a city-provided medical plan. One thousand three hundred eighty-five is much more than any other city employee receives when opting out of medical plans due to having coverage from another source. Most bargaining groups currently receive five hundred dollars, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty contracts, with a few having been decreased down from previous amounts of around thirteen hundred to eight hundred and fifty or lower. New hires receive even less, maxing out at five hundred. For those employees lucky enough to have that much, some get no cash and lose, some four hundred. Why is the city council voting to increase the opt-out amount, cash and lieu, to one thousand three hundred eighty while other employees receive far less?" That's it.
Uh, thank you so much.
And he's an ASME member, right?
Uh, are there any other, excuse me?
Sorry.
Any, any other public comments listed at this time, Stephen?
No, that is the only one for this item.
Okay, I'm gonna, uh, ask that we close the public comment period at this time? And proceed. Okay, now, we'll now open it up to council comments at this particular time. Does any council member have a comment they would like to make regarding item number three on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing
Apology, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure that it's, it's very clear that, that, uh, Mr. Zimmerman, on the text that I got earlier today, that to clarify again, if you don't mind, that, that it is reflective of the bargaining groups. Cause I, I don't think that that was, it's, you made it very clear. So hopefully that other people out there understand that we're not doing anything outside of what the amount is.
Right, so essentially the health and welfare benefits is a little bit different for the council members. Um, and they do not get a cash and lieu, just like the other bargaining groups, because council members cannot get cash and lieu. So this is actually, the thirteen eighty-five is the maximum amount to the extent that there are additional, um, benefits that the council receive from their spouse or from another, um, from another plan. So this is an equivalent of a deferred compensation retirement and welfare benefit, which is the maximum amount that the council can receive based on the maximum amount that several of the bargaining groups in the city already received. So to the extent that they may be a little bit more than the bargaining groups of ASME, there are other bargaining groups in the city that do receive a higher benefit maximum, uh, which is, I believe, equivalent to fourteen eighty-five, in dollars for the benefit. So that benefit that you see is not necessarily, it's not a cash and lieu benefit, because council members cannot receive cash and lieu. It is actually part of the health and welfare benefits with this just the equivalent value of that that goes into a deferred compensation plan, which is allowable by the maximum, some, some of the other bargaining groups in the city do receive that value. And so the council can receive up to that maximum amount of value and approve benefits to that amount.
Okay, so, cause I get Kaiser, so that would just cover Kaiser, um, on one person, and that would just completely cover Kaiser only, which is our city plan.
The fourteen eighty-five value. Okay, yes, that's what you're voting on, yes.
Yeah, okay, because I take Kaiser.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apologize. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Um, uh, it appears that, uh, there may be some concern where they're thinking that we're receiving cash, but, uh, we are actually not. However, according to the rules, if, uh, uh, not all council members are the same and if they have a plan elsewhere and they don't, uh, basically need the health coverage, they can put into deferred comp, you know, up to that amount. However, to reiterate, council has not received a change in health benefits for over, uh, let's see, what, what year is this? Twenty twenty, ten years, ten years. And also at the same time, council is not at the highest step as per some of the other bargaining units. So each bargaining unit is different. Did I get that correct? All right.
That's correct.
All right, thank you so much. All right, are there any further comments on this matter? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve item number three. I'll make that motion to approve item number three. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, uh, any further discussion? Uh, looks like this is a consent, uh, item, so I'll just, uh, we won't call roll call. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, item number three is passed. Moving on to item number four, adoption of reserve policies. And I'll, uh, turn that over to, uh, Vice Mayor who asked for that item to be pulled.
I did, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I, I'm sorry, Councilmember Dejavani, please. And, uh, uh, did, did, did you want staff to make a report or you just want to, uh, question?
Um, actually, I think with mine just, um, given, uh, what it is, because it's actually letting the public know that this will be the probably, I believe it's the first time, Mr. Mayor, that we actually have something in place where the, um, kind of goes along with our presentation. We are taking action and, um, and, and, uh, during this COVID crisis, because we are probably adopting, probably maybe the first time, a reserve policy. So if, if staff would give our report, that would be grateful, uh, to, for transparency for the public. For transparency for the public and the understanding that we are taking action.
Yes, certainly. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers and Madam City Manager. The city did have a. Twelve million dollar reserve that had existed for a number of years as the reserve policy. Or the reserve amount in the general fund. That amount was not ever vetted with council or. In very, very open dialogue. So in conjunction with the work that Management Partners has been doing with us throughout this year. They helped advise us on looking at either a two or three month. Reserve policy, which is what we have in the forecast now. Two months kind of as the minimum, three months as a more optimum rainy day fund. At the time we started these discussions. The need for rainy day fund was certainly not as imminent as it is today. But over time, you know, we want to continue to have. You know, very robust dialogue with city council and city staff. To always make sure that we have the best financial management policies. So that's where we are with this reserve policy presentation.
Mr. High, you did an excellent job and working with management partners. I just want to say it's a great. We're we're really lucky to have you during this time. And then thank the city manager as well and managing partners. Thank you very much. To let people know that this is a responsibility that we are taking action. Along with what you heard tonight earlier. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so is it my understanding that we've never had? I hear talk of twenty five percent and seventeen percent. Now we're establishing policy. To have a certain percentage that we should not go under.
Yes, we're we're saying that two months, two months would be our minimum that we would, you know. Never want to be below that. And that's what some of the, you know, as we went through the presentation with Steve. You know, looking at here's what's happens if we don't make any changes, no increases in. Revenues or reductions in expenses, you know, we would. Eat into the reserve over a number of years and and basically have no. Funding for, you know, unexpected items such as where we are today. So we're trying to, you know, be more fiscally accountable and prudent for the health of the city.
Outstanding. Thank you, Mr. High. And I must warn council. That hopefully we will, it's fiscally prudent. At the same time, we want to protect the city. But if we have to take drastic measures to ensure that we don't go below. The the threshold that we have decided on as to what happens tonight. There may even be reduction in services. Whatever it takes to maintain that. Reserve percentage. Is that correct?
Yes, I mean. By having the reserves, it gives us flexibility to. Manage towards, you know, the goals of the city, which will depend on. You know, what are what are revenues, what are expenses, you know, just being more proactive rather than being reactive.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. High. Okay, are there any further comments? Okay, so I ask Councilmember Dijivani, if if you feel comfortable, I'll. Request that you put forth the motion to approve.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be glad to. I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number four. Which is for us to.
Thank you, Councilmember Dijivani. Is there a second? I will second the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item number four is passed. Okay, moving on to item number five, and I'll defer to Vice Mayor Manalo. You had asked for this item to be pulled.
Thank you, Mayor. I I wanted to pull this item really to support and urge. The council this evening. I know it's on the consent agenda, but there is fifty four point three billion deficit in the state of California. As well, and you know, in these result of the COVID nineteen pandemic and recession and. It's really to support, you know, the educational system, also other aspects of safety net. Services that will be affected that trickle down also to our communities. And so, you know, it's so important for us to ensure that. Those who are are able to. Get give back a little to ensure that those there's a, you know. Support for more equity and safety net programs to our communities, so. Just wanted to share that with my colleagues and why that's on the agenda today.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Are there any other? Questions or comments for item number five? Okay, hearing none. Vice Mayor, did you want to make a motion to approve item number five?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to approve item number five, supporting and urging members of the California State Legislature and Governor to explore progressive. Revenue options, including a millionaire tax to ensure safety net programs. Are not cut due to the unprecedented fifty four point three billion deficit as a result of COVID nineteen pandemic and recession.
All right, is there a second?
Again.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, any abstentions? Any no's? All right, that item has been approved. And that does it for the consent agenda. Okay, moving on, we. Moving on to item number nine, public hearings. Okay, number nine, adopting national pollutant discharge elimination system. And I'll turn that over to Mr. Chu.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you tonight is the adoption of a resolution. Maintaining the existing national pollutant discharge elimination system regulatory fee. And also to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract for the county of San Mateo to. Help collect the NPDS local stormwater program fee. This fee was enacted back in nineteen ninety five. And starting in nineteen ninety six, this fee was assessed to properties. The fees are shown in the staff report. They're based on a single family slash duplex of nine dollars and eighty cents. Per parcel and multi families, commercials, they're also. Calculated based on the the amount that they. Increase in terms of area coverage. Land use and as it relates to a single family property. These fees have not increased for twenty four years. These fees remain the same as they did in nineteen ninety five. The the fees is expected to generate about four hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. And the estimated amount for cleaning of catch basins, doing inspections. Servicing the Vista Grande Canal and for the the cleaning cost of Vista Grande Canal. That's expected to be four hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars. The because these fees have not changed, staff is recommending that they. Get re adopted for this coming fiscal year and that the county assessor's office. Collects those fees for the for the daily city through the property tax rule. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions a council may have. Thank you.
Those muted. Thank you, Mr. Chu. Okay, any questions for Mr. Chu on this matter? I have one for you, Mr. Chu. You mentioned that this would generate four hundred and sixty five thousand dollars, yet it's going to cost us four. Hundred and four eighty nine. So that's a deficit of, was it twenty four, twenty four thousand? So. It it isn't my thought you didn't want to do it all at once and. Want to do a gradual increase, or why why aren't we at least trying to break even here?
Yeah, very. Thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. Right now, the proposal is that for this coming fiscal year, we would be short about twenty three, twenty four thousand dollars. And then the next year, we would be short about thirty two, thirty three thousand dollars. We we are not recovering full costs at this moment. The process to increase the fee is something that's being worked on because of the recent approval of. SB two thirty one, that's something that's being worked on in terms of. Being able to increase those fees through a protest hearing, Prop two eighteen. I think you've also been aware that there's been a requirement to do more green infrastructure type projects, and so that will also increase costs. But considering the current situation that we're in and and kind of looking into SB two thirty one. We felt that right now isn't a good time to to do the increase, something we would definitely consider. In terms of needing to do the increase at some point in the future. The difference right now is being proposed to be made up with the with the streets fund, streets and transportation fund.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chu. Any further questions for Mr. Chu on this item, number nine? Okay, hearing done, I'd like to open it up at this time to the public for any comments. Do we have any comments on this item?
Mayor, we have one comment. It is from Ray Satori, and it says. You can adopt pollutant discharge systems without increasing the regulatory fees by working. Out within your budgetary allocations as provided for in the budgetary change proposal for the calendar year. Just work within the decision packages adopted by the city council and management, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Solti, at this time, I would like to close the public hearing on this matter. Entertain a motion to. Adopt this resolution. Does anybody want to make a motion? I'll make the motion to adopt this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion? May I have a roll call, please? Madam City Clerk?
Ms. Dijivani?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod? Dr. Rod? Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Okay, that most.
And Dr. Rod?
Yeah, I was watching Dr. Rod on video. Okay, he's giving the thumbs up and.
Okay, thank you.
And if you read his read, he's lip syncing because his audio is not coming through. He did say aye. Try it again, Dr. Rod. Yeah, you're not coming through. You can't be heard.
That'll be fine. Thank you.
Okay, push your audio cord in there, Dr. Rod. See if.
Is it working now?
Yeah, there you go. All right. All right, thank you. Okay, you're welcome. Moving on to item number ten. Proposed new fee for lap swim at Giamona Pool, and I'll turn that over to Mr. Curran.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I apologize in advance if I freeze up. I've had a really bad internet connection all evening. The item before you is a consideration of increasing the lap swim fee at Giamona Pool. From six dollars per person to ten dollars. A little bit of background, Giamona Pool is one of the gems in our beautiful city. It was a joint project of the city of Daily City in the Jefferson Union High School District. New pool opened up in two thousand ten. It's been quite the hit with our residents ever since. But then we all know what happened on March ninth, the the pool, along with all of our other facilities. Were closed, and the pool has remained closed to this point. Due to safety concerns and specifically the the initial shelter in place order. Since March nineteenth, there's been, you know, a series of new health orders that have come out. And back on May fifteenth, the health order was updated that did allow the reopening of public pools. And the order specifically said that pools may be opened, but only if they are actively monitored. And managed to ensure the facility is either A. Only used by members of the same household. Or to use in a manner that ensures that all social distancing, face covering and all other requirements, including the prohibition against gathering and and shared equipment. So that that came out. In mid-May, and at that point, in most cities, we're scratching our head, wondering how to safely open a pool. And in fact, since then, several of our neighboring cities have decided to keep their public pools closed for the remainder of the summer. And in fact, some have even closed them for the remainder of the year. And those cities with closed pools include Belmont, Brisbane, San Bruno, and then the the Crome Mont Pool with San City of San Carlos. And also the city of San Mateo. And some of the other pools. Have opened up, including today. City of South San Francisco opened their pool for lap swim. City of Burlingame did a while ago. City Pacifica opened their pool one week ago today. And Redwood City. So you can see that the cities in San Mateo County are kind of split on having pools open and having them closed. So when we looked at what it would take. To maintain social distancing in our pool, one of the first things we realized, we wouldn't be able to fill the pool with paying customers. So to keep the fee at six dollars, and if we filled nine lanes. Would require a significant subsidy from the city of Daily City. Basically, the city subsidizing a very small portion of our population that would be able to enjoy the pool. The the sweet spot that we were looking at to to do an eighty five percent cost recovery. We projected if we charged ten dollars per swimmer that 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 could be attainable. And I will tell you that that's a relatively high fee going from six dollars to ten dollars. That is exactly what Pacifica has done. And it's also the fee currently in Redwood City. That doesn't mean people are excited about it. I do hear. After Pacifico's pool opened last Monday, there was some concern from the community that they thought that fee was too high. Cost prohibitive, but I understand that their their pool has been filled with swimmers since they opened up last Monday. So I think really there there's a philosophical question even before whether or not to consider the the fee rate. From six dollars to ten dollars per person. I think the philosophical question is, does Daily City want to be one of the cities? That opens pool back to the public, and in this case, it would only be for laps when that's the only thing that we think we can do safely in there. Or would we? Keep the pool closed like the cities of Belmont, Brisbane, San Bruno, San Carlos and San Mateo. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'll tell you, staff has put a lot of thought into the safety of the swimmers. We think we have a fairly comprehensive plan that that would make it as safe as possible. Again, with the increase in in COVID cases in San Mateo County, that's something we're very mindful of. And introducing people indoors to an indoor activity that's fairly strenuous. Certainly a lot more of a risk. Than than having the pool closed. And with that, I'll entertain any questions or comments from the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Curran. Okay, at this time, I'll first ask my colleagues if they have any comments or questions from Mr. Curran.
Mr. Mayor, I do have some questions.
Please.
Thank you. So I had a question on, when was the last time? Was this the initial fee in its inception? And when was the last time that fee was raised?
I don't know exactly the last time the fee was raised. I imagine at least one time since the pool reopened in in two thousand ten that it's been increased. And six dollars is what it was going into the pandemic, and I will tell you that's still with the cities of Burling. And $6 is what it was going into the pandemic, and I will tell you that is still what the cities of Burlingame and South San Francisco charge, so. It's been probably a few years at least since that fee was increased.
Okay, thank you. And then also a question around the lap swim, and I've never done it, so I have a question. So is that, is it an hourly, or like, how does that work? I'm just wondering.
Typically, it would be an hour increments. We were actually initially looking at a 30-minute session and thought a more reasonable expectation would be to go 45 minutes. Our staff observed swimmers at Oceana's Pool last week and timed them, and the swimmers were paying the $10 fee, and they were averaging between 20, 22 minutes up to about 40 minutes. So there weren't swimmers doing lap swim for an entire hour. That would be somebody who's very physically fit.
Okay, so you're saying it's for 30 minutes?
That was, that was our initial thought, but we think that we could go as high as 45 minutes. And then we empty the pool out, do 15 minutes of sanitizing, and then bring another group in. So it would all be by reservation only. You would make a reservation online. You would be assigned a lane number, and you would show up at your appointed time, come in one way, set your stuff outside the pool, get your lap swim in, and then when you leave, you go out to the opposite side of the building to minimize any kind of contact you might have with other swimmers.
Thank you. Do we know what the studies have been around just having a facility like the lap pool? And around, you know, just the safety of it, and what, I know the staff has worked on ensuring there are precautions. I was just wondering if there was any research that was done in regards to the health, safety, and what has been stated from, you know?
Yeah, certainly something we've engaged in with cities across California. We're all sitting in the same position, trying to figure this out. None of us are epidemiologists. We're certainly depending on professionals to give us guidance in that regard. The studies show that the virus doesn't survive in the chlorine, but it's a very vigorous workout. When you're swimming, you're breathing heavy. It's an aerobic workout, and you're exhaling into the air in an enclosed space, and swimmers, even if they don't share a lane, will be passing each other and likely could come within, within six feet. So there's no guarantee that it's safe. We took all the reasonable cautions that other cities have done. You know, limiting, trying to keep swimmers as far apart, both in the locker rooms and in the pool itself. But I can't, I can't guarantee that it would be a safe activity by any means. It would certainly be one of those people would do, knowing that there's an inherent risk at anything we do in a group setting indoors right now, especially right now. And Stephen can probably back me up. I think San Mateo County just had its highest single-day number of cases of positive COVID on Friday at about 110 or so. So the numbers are kind of going in the wrong direction. The timing for this is probably not ideal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure. DiGiovanni, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you all, Mr. Kern, for the presentation. Yeah, given the fact that the recent spike, and then now, it seems like the, as the governor says, we have a dimmer switch, and we are included in the San Mateo County Dimmer Switch and part of it in the dining. And if it was estimated that on the, what staff has to be there during the pool time?
So we would absolutely have to have mandated lifeguard on the deck. CDC and other agencies are suggesting that the lifeguard focus on the activity in the pool, and that he have or she have somebody, in addition to the lifeguard, checking to make sure people are following the rules on the deck of the pool. And somebody, an attendant at the front door, and depending on whether or not we choose to allow the locker room and locker rooms to be open, that would be another two steps. So we were looking at five staff. Pacifica uses three staff. I'm a little uncomfortable that three people could manage this operation with all the rules that are in place.
So, so actually then, this is a reference to the safety issue. We'd have five staff that would possibly be breathing in. I mean, they wouldn't be, have to wear face coverings during the whole time, I guess. I'm not sure. I guess they would have to.
Everybody in the building would wear face covering. The swimmers obviously would take their face covering off as they enter the water, but everybody else in the building, and it would only be staff. We wouldn't allow, you know, parents or friends or observers in the building. It's only, only the lap swimmers and the staff.
Yeah, and since this has been proposed, things have like done a turnaround, as you said. So I appreciate the fact that it looked like it was going to be open. And if there was a cost, like increase, because we're Daly City, as you know, we're not a diverse, don't have the money, and the $10 may be much for some, and $8 probably would not even cover our costs. Is that correct?
That's correct. Actually, believe it or not, even $10 would only get us about 85% of cost recovery. And that's only covering the cost of staff. I see Mr. Piccolotti in the meeting, and you know, there's 365,000 gallons of water in that pool that's replenished all the time to the tune of, you know, even if we don't do anything in the pool, there's a cost to the water that runs about $70,000 a year.
So how much, so obviously, we're losing money, being closed down, but is it worth, you know, this is talking about a big risk during COVID.
Yeah, there's, you know, pools are a community asset that I don't think in most communities ever break even. You know, they're, they're a little extra benefit to the community. And I, for what it's worth, I don't believe Jefferson High, excuse me, Westmore High School plans to use the pool in the coming school year, at least not in the fall session.
Oh, yeah, currently, they probably made a decision not to. Is that correct? Probably.
I didn't hear the last comment.
The school decided not to use the pool?
Other than LA Unified and San Diego Unified, the schools aren't really at a point where they're making a lot of decisions just yet. But in the staff that we've talked to, they did not think that in the coming school year, Westmore students would be using the pool during, during the first part of the school year.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Oh, did I just lose folks? Hold on. Okay. All right, are there any other comments at this time?
Yeah, I do have one more question. So what is the demand right now, given that there's COVID? That's a question I have around the demand of folks wanting to utilize the lap pool.
Prior to COVID, we had a pretty regular group that did lap swim, you know, for fitness reasons. And we estimated probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 to 80 swimmers would probably, if they had the opportunity, get back in the water. It's a little hard to know, since the pool is closed. I don't know how reluctant people will be to come back. I don't know how reluctant people will be to pay $10. In Pacifica, that's what they charge, and initially, swimmers thought $10 was better than, you know, to get access, so they were willing to pay it. By the end of the week, I understand from my colleagues in Pacifica that lap swimmers are actually complaining to Pacifica City Council members. And I certainly don't want to put any of you in a position where you're contacted because people think $10 is too much for lap swim, but I do understand that's what happened in Pacifica last week.
Thank you. Yeah, I think for me, I mean, I understand cost recovery is important, but where I'm at right now is around the safety of our community and opening up a facility at a time when you did mention there's increases. It's really close contact. I don't, I don't know if there's ways to just have like further lanes. I don't know if that impacts anything, and if it's worth the cost of having how many staff if there's only two lanes, you know, from one another. So it's really on that, and that issue, and also my concern for the safety of staff. And so that's where I'm at. I think if we were in a different place and time, this would be easier for me to move forward with. I think right now, you know, I, I just don't want to take any risks in, in having anyone just, you know, precautionary for our community. Thank you.
All right, any other comments at this time?
I just have a point of clarification, Mayor. Are we voting on the reopening of the pool, or are we voting on the increase?
That's a, that's a good question, Dr. Rod, and I'm about to address that. On any further comments that anyone else has before I open it up to public hearing?
Just one more. Mr. Mayor, thank you. I appreciate that. I'll let you take over that particular part. Probably the last thing, Mr. Kern, is that if, if we come to a point again, I'm pretty much on the same page about the high risk at this time, and I'm sure you understand that, with the spike. We're not sure how long it's going to last, and I think the safety of the, of anyone is prior right now. And if there's shelter in place, we're trying to encourage that as well. There's no reference on anybody in the, in the pool or anybody in our record. It's no reflection of yourself or anyone. But the next time, maybe if we ever get to the end, hopefully we'll get there, then we could maybe do outreach and see that there's a need. But for me, I have to say the same, that the risk is pretty high right now. And I don't feel very comfortable about the pool itself and putting people in the harms way that we don't, the unknown, the unknown of this COVID. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll let you take the floor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Dr. Rod alluded to the point that I'm about to make now. The issue at hand here is the proposed fee from $6 to $10. This is not a proposal to determine whether it is safe or not to go into the pool. Apparently, there are many issues, like say, outdoor versus indoor dining. In the case of enterprise that the Daly City runs, it is up to the staff and others within Daly City to determine whether it is safe or not. If it is not safe, when it does become safe and they allow folks to come in, what we are voting on is what they will pay, not whether we are saying it is safe or not. For instance, I'll give an example. Folks want to reopen the schools in Daly City. But that is not for us to decide who, when, and when will the schools open. That is up to the superintendent and the school staff. So if safety was an issue, this is not what we are discussing on item number 10. We are discussing the fee.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, it's
Hold on, hold on, let me finish, please, and then I'll give you a chance to speak. We are discussing the fee as we move forward. We heard a discussion tonight, even if we were to raise the fee $10, there is still some sort of subsidy that is going to have to come from the city. And obviously, we are not meeting with cost recovery. So again, it's the fee as to what folks will charge. Safety, and we want to move forward and say, given the amount of staff, that's for another agenda item to discuss. And I'm sure as council, given the information, we can say, you know what? We would prefer that the pool be closed, but that is not the item on the agenda tonight. The item is the cost for folks to do lap swim. Okay, Mr. Mayor, go ahead. You have the floor.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, sorry. When I read the staff report, it said, if the City Council concurs, staff in the Aquatics Division of the Department of Library and Recreation Services will reopen Giamona Pool in late July for lap swim. So that's why I had thought it was also on this agenda item this evening.
Okay, Councilmember DiGiovanni, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, is it possible that because of the spike or whatever, like you said, it is about the fee, but because we haven't done any, like, we need to do maybe more outreach to see what the need is first? Can we revisit this item? Like, when we see that things are a little bit long, because we are at a point where we, we're not even sure if there's a demand for it? Because we haven't done any outreach, is what I'm, right, we're just comparing it to other cities. So there hasn't been any outreach to see if people even want to. Can we revisit it later?
We did early on, just, just to clarify, we did contact our population of lap swimmers that we know.
Okay, thank you.
And they did complete a survey, and Romeo Benson is in this meeting as well. And Romeo may want to speak, if, I don't want to put him on the spot, but specifically to the outreach effort that was made and the response we got.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Hi, Romeo.
Hi. So we sent out a, a survey, and I think it was approximately a month ago, just to see what our lap swimmers, if they were willing to come back. From what we got, it was an astonishing amount. I would say approximately 80% have responded and had stated they would be willing to come back to the pool. The price itself, though, that's where it's a, it's a huge question. When it came to, when we announced the fact that, what if it was $10? It was mixed. Here, we had approximately 60% saying no and 40 saying yes. My only issue right now is the fact that it's been a month. And within this month, people's mindsets have changed drastically. I mean, the fact that things are opening right now, and if you go out there, yeah, you'll see people, but are they, are people willing? They'll say yes, but when that time comes when the facility is open, will they actually come? Will they actually feel safe after the first day? Will that anxiety come back when, after experienced one week of just being out there at the pool? I can't, we can't promise the fact that they'll be attending.
Mr. Romeo, I have a question for you. Did your survey include the question of if they're concerned about their safety and well-being in returning?
It was fully explained that we would, we would go through the whole process, but that wasn't our main question at that time. But it was just, it was just mentioned in the survey, the fact that we would make sure that the, you know, that the facility would be well-staffed and that we will make sure high prior, I mean, high touched areas were cleaned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments for questions of Mr. Kern or Mr. Romeo?
So this is, this is Shawna, and I think the purpose of this item was to do exactly what's happened in the last 15 minutes on this item, which is to have a discussion about where the council may be on this issue. And I definitely agree that when Romeo, who did a great job, thank you, Romeo, doing the outreach, I think that, that the circumstances have changed. It is perfectly understandable for the council to want to revisit this, especially given the governor's new order today. The fact that we might be scaling back again, coupled with the fact that there will be a subsidy associated with reopening, it makes perfect sense, should the council want to maybe look, look at this again in a couple of months. That's just my, my input, so that you don't feel like you have to make a decision on this tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Hypothetical, if the pool, if the pool was to close tomorrow and be closed for the remainder of the year, and we take this matter up again in January, what matter would we be taking up? The safety issue or the fee schedule?
That's a great question. I will defer to Joseph Kern in just a minute, but I believe it would be, it would be, if the shelter in place was lifted, we probably wouldn't be having this discussion at all. The, the fact that we were going to ask the community to pay more had to do with the fact that it costs more to provide the service, because there are a few people that are able to be in the pool at the same time, meaning there are more staff to, to pool member ratio. So in a perfect world, in January, we'd probably go back to regular rates if this, if the SIP was lifted. Now, that doesn't take into account what we talked about earlier, which is we're looking at fees in general, citywide. That's a totally different discussion, but, but for the SIP, we wouldn't be having this discussion right now.
Okay. Yes, it makes sense, but what I'm saying is that there's going to be a new norm, and we will still be following procedures to ensure the safety, such as the emptying of the pool and refilling it, and the cost of 70 grand. such as the emptying of the pool and refilling it, and at the cost of 70 grand. And obviously, the city is putting out some sort of money, and we are not getting it back in the way of fees, whether the pool is open or closed.
Good point, and you're right, there may be ongoing safety efforts and initiatives that we would have to come back to council at some point anyway to recover some of those costs.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you for the update. Okay, then any further questions from my colleagues? Hearing none. Does anybody want to make a motion to either revisit or to move forward with this matter?
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, if I may.
Okay, please, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I make a motion to, to move this agenda further down the line, to agendize it further down. Once there's more clarity on this, the rise of cases in that regard. And I think that, if anything, this is a comprehensive also look at the fees down the line. But at this point, I think for the safety reasons of our community as well. So I'd like to just re-agendize this for a future meeting.
All right, Vice Mayor, we do have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second, further discussion or comments. Okay, I will make a comment at this time before we take a vote. And that is to the City Manager and Mr. Kern, by keeping the pool open at this time at a cost of $6 for lap swim, the city of Daily City is losing money. Is that correct?
That's correct. And just to be clear, the pool has been closed since March 9th. So right now, there's, there's no activity at all in the pool.
Okay, and would there be anything from preventing you and the City Manager from reopening the pool? Let's just say later on down the line, can we, can this matter be brought back before the council prior to your decision to reopen the pool? Because that's what I'm hearing about the motion, is to revisit this at a later time, so that if the pool is reopened, it's reopened with safety in mind and also with the possibility of increasing the rates.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer that and say yes. So I think we will continue to follow the shelter in place. We'll continue to follow the outreach that we get from the community about whether or not they're really sorely missing this. And we'll continue to look at the cost of reopening it versus the safety issues. And we will definitely bring this forward to council in consideration for all of those factors.
Excellent. Thank you so much for the clarification, Mr. Kern. Thank you for your report.
I will add, add one more, because I know there are people, interested parties watching this evening, especially from the Daily City Dolphins. This issue was not about the Daily City Dolphins, this was about lap swim. But they were kind of gauging to see if the pool would open to start the conversation. So that might be something that we can package together at a future date, the consideration of the Daily City Dolphins returning to the pool as well.
Oh, that's great.
All right, but I'm going to remain firm that as per this particular meeting, safety was of utmost importance. And so when we does return back to the council, I hope that we would have those questions answered to include the cost involved in order to maintain this pool should it reopen.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So on the motion as been first and second, is there any further discussion? Okay, so Madam City Attorney, I'm going to defer to ask a question. The item was proposed new fees for lap swim at Giamona Pool. However, there's been a new motion indicated on the floor that has different language than what actually number 10 has. So do we vote on number 10 and then move to the motion? Or will entertain the new motion that's on the floor and take a roll call vote?
I would suggest, since this is a fee that requires a public hearing, and it is published in that way, that I would table this item rather than have a motion to continue to a date certain, given, given the situation. And that, in that sense, you can just make a motion to table this, Mayor, and just vote. And essentially, when City Manager is in, and the director is available to put this back on the agenda, we would renotice it accordingly with the proper fees.
Now, thank you, Madam City Attorney. I actually think that that's much cleaner, because we're pertaining to the item 10 exactly as it is written. So if it's okay with you, Vice Mayor, I hope that you would consider amending your motion that has been placed onto the floor to say specifically, item number 10, that we table this matter until a later time that it can be brought to us.
Happy to move it to that motion to table this item at a later time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And Pam, thank you, Councilmember D.G. Avani. So on, any further discussion? Okay, may I have a roll? Oh, Mr. Salty, do we have any public comments? I'd like to open it up to public.
One, one comment, it's from Raisatory, it says, "For God's sake, please consider moratorium to all increases in fees, toll, wages, or even salaries while we are having this pandemic world crisis. Let's have a good conscience to your constituent. Remember equals this year is an election year."
Thank you, Mr. Salty. Okay, I'd like to close public comments at this time. We do have a motion on the floor, so I'll call the question. May I have a roll call, please, on the motion, which is to table this matter until a later time? Madam City Clerk, would you kindly call the roll, please?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Mrs. Sylvester?
Aye. Okay, the motion passes. Thank you very much, everyone, staff and colleagues for your very, very valuable input. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to item number 11, which is the second reading, ordinance number 1439, amending the Daily City zoning map by amending ordinance number 1260 to plan development zone PD-54A and establishing planned development standards. And I'll turn that over to Madam City Attorney, Ms. Immerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. This item came before you by way of an introduction of first reading for ordinance number 1439. This is the second reading of the ordinance of rezoning redevelopment blocks 51, 52, and 50 of the Jennifer Sarah portion. It's an ordinance of the City Council amending the zoning map by amending zoning ordinance 1260 to plan development zone PD-54A and establishing planned development standards.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney, and is this the development that we discussed at the last meeting to which we had to make amendments in order for compliance?
Yes, this is, this is in regards to the Sierra, the Dougans and Thunder Village sites.
Thank you very much. All right, so this is a second reading, folks. Basically, it's a continuance from the last meeting. Are there any questions at this time from any of my colleagues? Okay, let's see, since this is the second reading, we wouldn't have to open it to public hearing. So we'll move ahead with adopting the ordinance, and may I have a roll call, please?
We have a motion for the adoption.
Oh, let me see. All right, thank you, Madam City Attorney. Do we have a motion on the floor to adopt the second reading as listed herein?
Motion to adopt second reading.
And I'll second that motion. Is there any further discussion? May I have a roll call, please, Madam City Clerk?
Ms. D.G. Avani?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Mrs. Sylvester?
Aye. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is public appearances and communications. And what I'd like to do now is turn it over to Mr. Salty, if you have any communications from the public.
Yes, I have about, I think there's 11. Okay, the first one is from Holly Lim. It says, pass a strong resolution that supports Black Lives Matter, redistribute DCPD funds, and create an oversight committee. She also had another comment, and I just want to make, I connected with her separately, but it did say, "I don't want to submit my public comment here. I want to speak at the actual meeting. Sometimes the staff doesn't read the comments." Okay, the next one is from Jeanette Armus, and it says, "Good evening, City Council and Mayor Sylvester. I attended both of the previous study sessions to discuss Black Lives Matter, and I'm wondering what is your response to the community's comments? I am advocating that you discuss and pass a resolution in support of Black Lives at the next council meeting and to create one to two-page executive summaries of the city's budget and the police budget, so it is accessible to residents. I am in favor of establishing a community oversight commission, establishing a human rights commission, and reallocating some DCPD funds towards community services like affordable housing, libraries, parks and rec, and the community service center. I am also requesting an open budget meeting where our community can participate in how funds will be allocated to each department for the coming year." The next comment is from Kaylee Kerr, and it says, "Good evening, City Council and Mayor Sylvester. My name is Kaylee, and I am a Daily City resident. Looking at the Daily City budgets from past years to now, DCPD has constantly awarded a colossal share of our city's expenditures, far more than the rest of our services provided. This year, the allocation for DCPD was $36,691,658, which is 40% of our total city budget, 40%, and to what end? DCPD is not showing, and budget reports that its massive resources have kept us safer. At the next council meeting, we urge you to create one to two pages of executive summaries of the city's budget and police budget that is accessible to residents. We would also like to reallocate DCPD funds towards community services like affordable housing, libraries, parks and rec, and the community service center. We are seeing that police around the country are violent, racist, and wasteful, and that's what we're financially empowering in our community above all other services. What we are also seeing is more and more evidence that community safety is much more likely to occur when people's needs are being met. We must consider how far the $36 million would go with other nonviolent, prevention-oriented services that address our livelihoods and humanity, such as health services, social services, infrastructure, childcare assistance, homelessness services, libraries, and our parks and recreation services. We need to reimagine public safety to address root causes rather than defaulting to violence, which is disproportionately used against our black neighbors and others who've been targeted by police historically. Additionally, with COVID-19 affecting our community's economy for the foreseeable future, budget cuts will likely be made. We must start with DCPD before anything else. I'm calling you to slash the DCPD budget and instead apply the funding towards these stated alternatives. Help us make Daily City truly safe, healthy, and prosperous, and join me, your fellow residents in the rest of the country, in moving away from violent policing and toward a just society." The next comment is from Joseph Nelson. It says, "Number one, I would like to see the city reduce funding of the Daily City Police Department and allocate those funds to community service that have been defunded over the years, such as library services, after-school programs, mental health, social services, and housing. Our current system is not set up to prevent crime, but instead is a punitive system, and we, as a community, have a responsibility to do better. Number two, their reporting back on the Daily City discussion in the newsletter makes me very much question the data being shared. I am concerned that this sort of highly unscientific survey, which has many sorts of biases as to who responds, but also ranking only by first choice hides how respondents may have actually felt, because it does not weight lowest ranking. This is besides the fact that many of the priorities should not and do not compete against each other. Data like this is ripe for manipulation and should not be used for decision-making." The next comment is from Scott Hong Ducit, and it says, "Good evening, City Council and Mayor Sylvester. My name is Scott Hong Ducit, and I am a Daily City resident. At the very minimum, I encourage you to discuss and pass a resolution in support of Black Lives at the next council meeting and to create one to two-page executive summaries of the city's budget and the police budget, so it is accessible to residents. I encourage you to lay the groundwork to establish a community oversight commission, establish a human rights commission, and to reallocate some DCPD funds towards community services like affordable housing, libraries, parks and rec, and the community service center. The safest communities in America are places that don't center the police. In Daily City, we center the police with 41% of the city's budget going to DCPD, the largest allocation of any kind for our city. Let's shift massive spending on police that do not keep us safe and reinvest in human services that meet our community needs. Please ensure a thoughtful, deliberate, and community participatory process as we figure out how to do this together. Let's reimagine and create a safer community for all of us. Thank you, Scott." Okay, the next one is from Joanna Rosales, and it says, "Good evening, Mayor Sylvester, City Council members and city staff. I would like to see the city of Daily City reallocate DCPD funds into community services. I have attended both study sessions discussing Black Lives Matter and the Daily City Police Force, and have still not seen an appropriate response from the city. I encourage you to pass a resolution in support of Black Lives to continue this conversation within our city. If you need examples to work off of, the city of Cupertino, Mill Valley, and San Mateo County Board of Supervisors passed resolutions, to name a few. In regards to budget, residents need a detailed, user-friendly, and readable police budget. As a small startup, I recommend the check register be either divided or categorized according to department and adding a short description to each line item on what the money is being spent on. The community has given you many great suggestions, and we as residents need answers and solutions. I hope you see that action is being taken. I hope to see that action is being taken by the July 27th meeting. Thank you for your time." And the next comment is from Josh Berry, and it says, "As a Daily City resident, homeowner, and taxpayer, I'm advocating for the city to act as soon as possible to reinvest budget out of the police department and into community services such as healthcare, economic development, beautification projects, and youth services. My neighborhood does not suffer from violence nor crime. We do not need more law enforcement. My neighborhood suffers, suffers from illegal dumping of trash, reckless drivers, vacant storefronts, and homeless people having mental health crises. A militarized police force does not solve these problems, but my only option is to call the police if I see these problems in my neighborhood. Please invest in other community areas that do not involve the police. Also, the survey about the Daily City discussion was unprofessional. The questions were worded poorly and appeared, it appeared ripe for the miscategorization of our priorities. That survey should not be used to make decisions nor set policy, and the survey author should learn about bias and be fired due to the poorly written questions and the ways that the so-called results were presented to the community." The next comment is from Shaquille Ali, and it says, "When I hear Daily City people say defund the police, I think what they are really saying is that it's good to have oversight, guidance, and improvement of public safety through effective evaluation and coordination of fire, police, emergency medical services, mental health, and other vital public agencies. It's everyone's job to prevent violence and keep Daily City safe and welcoming for all." And finally, I believe this is, this might be the last comment, it's from Nick Ochi Pinti. It says, "Thank you for discussing the budget during our ongoing public health and economic crisis as we work together to get through COVID-19. One way we can address this issue in our community is by actively engaging the development of funding alternatives with regards to the largest part of our city budget, the police department. Despite repeated calls from the community over several city council meetings, we have yet to see any substantive action regarding repeated calls and national dialogue around defunding police departments, and at the minimum, adoption of a resolution standing in full support of Black Lives Matter. These items should have been on tonight's agenda. Please include these items at your next public meeting. Thank you." And actually, yes, that was the last, last public comment.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Salty. All right, we're gonna move on to the next item. Are there any appointments to board commission, membership, or committee appointments this evening? We're gonna move on to the next item. Are there any appointments to board commission, membership, or committee appointments this evening? All right. Next are reports, and item number twelve, any council committee reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Vice Mayor, please.
On June twenty-third, we had Affordable Housing Council Committee, and basically talked about the terms and conditions for the Daly City Housing Trust Fund loan for the twenty-one apartments located on East Smokey and Abbott Streets. Also, there was a request for development funding from core companies on four ninety-three Eastmore. Also, it was, I remember that meeting with you, Mayor. We were very productive with staff. Request for pre-development funding, assistance from Bridge Housing for Carter Martin site, and then also revisiting the BMR rental housing program guidelines. And just, I know that we are going to continue to convene on some of the items on, on this, but definitely looking extensively at, you know, opportunities where we can support more affordable housing and also talk about ways we could also support rental subsidies for those that are in need at this current time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Being that I attended that committee meeting with you as well, I have to concur. And to add on, I appreciate your thoughtfulness and asking the correct questions. And we're talking about deep affordability. I do recall one piece of property, I mean, as low as even fifty percent AMI. And, you know, we're doing everything we can to provide affordable housing for our community in Daly City. And it's definitely a pleasure to serve with you on both those committees. And I'd like to thank staff for keeping us up to date in those areas, and we will continue to provide the information to council. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll ask Dr. Rod or Councilmember Buenaventura, I believe, at a cannabis meeting.
I can go ahead and provide some updates, and then Councilmember Buenaventura, if you want to add on, tag team, feel free. We met on July seventh, and we were talking about zoning regulations for retail sales for cannabis. There is a preliminary overlay map of different places where potential areas for retail for cannabis, and we'll be discussing it in a later date with the City Council. I think one thing that I want to highlight is that when we're looking at this overlay district, it's not concentrated in one area or focuses one area, but it was a general map of Daly City and different potential areas that are have certain regulations. I think it was six hundred feet away from schools and and different areas around City Hall and the Bay Shore, top of the Hill Mission, all the way down to the most southern point in Daly City. So I think this map has shown some equity in terms of like potential areas for retail. And then Councilmember Ray, if you want to add anything else, if I missed anything.
No, Dr. Rod, you did a great job, I think. You covered all the points. I will just give my, my own personal opinion is that I thought it was, the staff did a great job of putting together the overlay. There was, as Dr. Rod said, there was clearly equity, fairness. There was no one specific concentration area. Staff was very concerned about separation and distancing, and so I thought it brought the right balance. And so I'm looking forward for when, when the staff actually brings this before the council on a regular council meeting. It'll be an interesting discussion, but you can be assured that what was, what is being produced was done very thoughtfully, carefully, and in consideration of a lot of different factors, including all of your comments the last time we discussed it. So I'm looking forward to discussion. We need to get rolling on this, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Buenaventura and Councilmember Dr. Rod. All right, are there any other council committee meetings reports? All right, we'll move on to item number thirteen. How about city council reports?
I would like to add something, Mr. Mayor.
Please do that.
I just, just hearing from the public comment about a statement for Black Lives Matter, I just want to assure those that our staff and alongside City Council that we are working on a statement for Black Lives Matter, and I think that it is a crucial matter to discuss this national issue, and that there's other cities that are moving along in terms of creating commissions and talking about race issues and policing. So I just want to, you know, just tell the folks that we are, we are working on it. I wish it was at a faster pace, but, you know, based on our process, it's, we're getting there.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. All right, any further city council reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Thank you so much. So I am part of the Equity Recovery Group for, with the county. And the last meeting, we provided recommendations with the Recovery Coordinating Committee Plan. And really, they talked about ways in which to ensure that minority businesses have support and small businesses. This is really kind of a way to ensure that there is equity and assistance. Even for the next round of grants, they will have applications, not only online, but they could be done over the phone just to ensure that folks that don't have access to technology can avail of opportunities such as this SMC Strong grant that was previously sent out with overwhelming amount of folks applying. Also, this Thursday, the same Equity Recovery Group is invited to join the Public Information and Outreach Committee, in which I know both Shawna and Stephen are part of, alternatively, to ensure that outreach to our community in Daly City is there. And it's really important, given the fact that we are the largest city in San Mateo County. So thank you both for sitting on that committee and representing on, on that as well. I do want to also address those that have spoken and sent in letters. I want to thank Mayor Sylvester for, I know, putting on a special meeting in which to let the public know we are working on having a resolution, you know, in regards to Black Lives Matter and the racial equity that's happening. And we will continue to work on, on this, and it is in progress. And so I just wanted to let everyone know that as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, any further comments at this time from the city council?
No, Mr. Mayor. I think it's, it's the item, Mr. Mayor. Are we, are we able to discuss the list that Shawna and Stephen and them put together?
If you're referring to items on the city manager's report.
Oh, yes.
That's coming.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, City Manager.
All right. Any further comments from council at this time? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is item number fourteen, staff. And fourteen A is the city manager's report, and I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. So as part of the agenda packet tonight, there are two items. The first is the ongoing city manager memo, which is the update on the ongoing services that the city is providing during this pandemic, which is obviously unique to Daly City, and with a lot of cities are also dealing with changes in services. So a lot of this is just sort of a reiteration of what you've already seen. I think the important part of the narrative in this memo is the relief that we have provided to our residents throughout this time. I won't get into any specifics unless you have questions, but the section on relief to residents is actually a good segue to the second memo, which I have to give credit to our Director of Water, Wastewater Resources, Thomas Piccolati, for initiating this action, because he and his staff, along with some consultants that are experts in this field, recognize the uncertainty, the economic challenges, and have really made the recommendation to, during this time, defer the, what the increases that we were going to have take place, nine point five percent, we were going to originally ask for July first of 2020, but given this time, timing's not great. We can absorb it through, through our funding, and so staff is recommending to provide that relief to our residents and defer those rate increases to January first, 2021. And so that was something I, we both, Tom and I, wanted to highlight tonight. But of course, Mr. Piccolati and I can talk about that item as well as any items I can talk about on the city manager memo.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Okay, great. Now I'd like to move on to Mr. Piccolati. He's been patiently waiting, and I'm sure folks would like to hear in further detail what was recommended, and please enlighten us, Mr. Piccolati. You, Piccolati, you have the floor.
Well, thank you and good evening. Whoops. Am I, am I on mute?
No, you're fine.
Okay. As I said, thank you and good evening to you, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, staff, and our public. City Manager captured quite a bit of, of it, so pretty much on point there. But as described in the report that's before you tonight, staff has been paying close attention to the current economic situation, uncertainty. And at the city manager's direction during the budget process, the department took a real close look at our projected revenues and expenditures and identified cost savings in key areas. I'll just say that the manager made it clear during the budget process not to leave any stones unturned. And as a result, we're able to pass on savings to our citizens and businesses at a crucial time by deferring the nine point five percent rate increase to January of 2021. The resolution passed by council in 2018, setting the water rates along with recent court decisions, allows this type of deferral to take place. I can get into detail if you'd like on that, but I'd also like to say that other agencies have also deferred programmed increases during this time, including our wholesale supplier, the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, Cal Water managed cities of South San Francisco, San Mateo, San Carlos, Westboro, Coastside, Mid Peninsula, North Coast County Water Districts, to name a few. We can accomplish the deferral with little to no impact on any of our critical water projects and programs. And also, in addition, it's timely in the sense that we're currently in the process of updating our master plan. This master plan will drive the next ten years. That was a council-approved master plan. We'll closely monitor the financial position on an ongoing basis, and I think I'll just conclude there and, and take any questions, but I'd like to thank both the council and the city manager for your leadership during these unprecedented times. It's having the support and, you know, actually, on a, on a separate note, just seeing everybody tonight for me is a great thing, because I, I miss everybody, so it's really good to see everybody. But I'm happy to take questions at this time, if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Piccolati. I'll first start off with a comment. You know, we could have just let it be as it is and just get that nine point five percent, and then next thing you know, we have a little surplus. But I'd like to thank you because that's the direction of the city manager to look for something, and you said it. No, no stone is to be unturned, and to come back and come up with this great plan. And, you know, I was looking for the deferral that was, I mean, the rate was supposed to increase, and you said that you're going to run this deferral for rate increases all the way on up through January. That took a lot of work, sir, so I commend you. I commend the city manager, and I commend your staff for bringing this to light. And thank you for sharing that information with us this evening.
Thank you. That's, you know, the, the reason we're able to do it is it's a product of the change in trajectory of the fund that the council took the decision in two eighteen and, and made a tough decision to go with the two eighteen, the five-year program, and that has put us in a strong position with our reserves and our capital reserves and our operating reserves that we're able to do this during this time. So I, I think it goes to the leadership of the city, that we're able to find that way to do this and give, you know, the, the break and the relief to the citizens and the customers.
You know, you're a good, you're a good man, Mr. Piccolati. Can I ask a question? I asked a question tonight of Mr. Stoller. So is this part of the enterprise fund?
This is Enterprise Fund Forty-One, the water fund.
Okay, I just wanted to make that point clear. So by us being unable to touch that money, you were able to find, based upon the council's decision, some extra money, and you're giving it back to the people.
Yes, we're able to collaboratively do our part.
Very good, sir. Thank you. Any other comments from my colleagues?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you to staff, Ms. Maltby and Mr. Piccolati for this. This definitely shows leadership around these unprecedented times and really looking at ways to support our community. And even this step is, is every bit helps. So I just want to say thank you.
Okay, the other comments. Hello there, Josh. I see you there, and you're, I'm sure you're one of the ones who helped in this as well. You're to be recognized as well. Any other comments?
I'll make mine one short. We are very lucky that during these unprecedented times, we have leadership that encompasses all of us, and the idea that people can work together and that have this relationship with Mr. Piccolati and our city manager, our colleagues and staff says a lot about the city. And I know this has been really rough, and you've had long days, but I think after tonight and taking that ship and moving it forward and supporting our community together, I think that that will show the residents that, that we care, and even though, no matter what it is, that they come first. And that's really unprecedented in that manner as well. So that is demonstrated tonight, Mr. Piccolati and Ms. City Manager and to the staff, that you really, really do it. You do the work. You just don't talk about it. You do it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DiGiovanni, for the kind words. Okay, any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to the adjournment, and I'd like to call on Councilmember Buenaventura, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like us to adjourn in memory of Bill Duplessis. Bill was, as everybody knows, was a longtime lobbyist for the city of Daly City. He really had a colorful life. He lived a life of, he was a football player in college, and I think he played maybe a year or so in the NFL. And he also was an assemblyman in San Mateo County for the twenty-fourth State Assembly District. And then he, soon after that, he became a lobbyist, and he's done a lot of great work for Daly City. He's been a longtime supporter of our city, and it was with great sadness that I learned of his passing from cancer last week or maybe two weeks ago. So, Bill, thank you. We miss you. We, we've always loved you in Daly City. You've left a mark here, and we'll never forget you. I'd also like to adjourn in memory of Sunny Batara, which is Walter Batara, who was a commissioner in the county. Walter Batara, who is a commissioner in the county for aging and he's also a Daly City resident, Walter is. And his brother, Sonny Batara sadly passed away. So I'd like to adjourn in memory of him. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura. Councilmember Dr. Rod?
Yes. This is, I want to adjourn in memory of John Eric Swing. I have a statement from their family. My association with John Swing is when I was a teenager, he was really involved in the Filipino Student Union, Catipunan and UC Riverside. And I remember him being my brother's older, my older brother's friend in college and it was one of the first times I was exposed to a phenomenon called Philippine Cultural Night that, that is, that's happened all throughout the nation and started SF State. So I'm just going to read an abbreviated statement from family. So it is with great sadness that we announced the passing of our loved one, John Eric Swing, a longtime community organizer, Asian-American advocate, US Marine Corps veteran and ethnic studies scholar. John left an indelible impact on the city of Los Angeles, Kenya, and kept family at the center of his life. As a child of Filipino immigrants and the true son of city of Los Angeles, John's Filipino-American experiences inform both his passion for community service and insatiable curiosity in multicultural history. This led him to pursue a bachelor's degree in ethnic studies at UC Riverside, class of ninety-five. And while at UCR, he continued to promote solidarity among Asian-Americans through his co-founding of Asian-American Fraternity, Sai Kai Omega. After college, John enlisted in US Marine Corps reserves where he honorably served his country for six years. After a few years of working in the private sector and office administration and logistics, John pursued his passion for community service and social work as a senior probation corrections officer for the Riverside County Probation Department Safety and Social Services. John also worked internationally where he was brought to Costa Rica, Vietnam and Philippines. His work encompassed education, community advocacy, healthcare and business development. Upon his return from overseas, John reestablished his community advocacy in Los Angeles by working as an independent nonprofit consultant and human, and health resource and services administration peer reviewer. His work led to his appointment as the Business Director for the Festival of Philippine Arts and Culture, FPAC, a development and operational management position for Filipino-American Services Group Incorporated, FASG. And finally, at Search to Involve Filipino Americans at SEPA. At SEPA, John was fully engaged and passionately carrying out his duties for community service and led the organization's small business counseling services and programming since two thousand fifteen. SEPA posthumously announced John was appointed executive director earlier this year after a year-long nationwide search to fill its top position. John contracted COVID nineteen in mid, mid-June and due, due to complications with the virus passed away on Sunday evening, June twenty-eight, twenty twenty. The Swing family extends their great appreciation and gratitude for the overwhelming support of family, friends and colleagues through his memorial front, fund. John Eric Swing is survived by his parents, LSD Swing and Aurora S. Swing, his wife Ellen Rodriguez Swing, her two children Nico and Sasha, his four children Zachary, Joshua, Chloe and Mackenzie, their mother Joyce Swing, his sister Karen Bromley and her husband Craig, niece Mayumi, nephew Miles, his brother PJ Swing and his wife Yorlani and nephews Jaden, Gianni and Jonah.
Wow, that was very touching. Thank you so much, Dr. Rod, for that bio. I would like to close in honor, adjourn in memory of Jane Guillory. This is the Detective Christopher Collins's paternal grandmother of our police department. So with that being said, I would like to pause for a brief moment of silence, please. All right, folks, I thank you so much. This meeting is now adjourned and be safe, be healthy and be strong. We are Daly City strong. Good night, Mr. Doug, and I just saw you there. Good night. All right, good night, everyone.
Thank you, guys. Good night.